Forget it. My mic's not working, so we're gonna call to order our... Oh, now it is. I'll stop yelling. Let me start over. Good afternoon. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Everyone, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One nation.
You guys gotta get synchronized.
Yeah, we're working on it.
Working on it.
All right, next up, we have our broadcast statement from our SUD member.
This meeting of the Sacramento City Unified School District is recorded. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable, Channel 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be closed captioned and video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Monday, May 19th at 12:00 PM and Wednesday, May 21st at 9:00 AM on Metro Cable, Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/metrocable14. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please complete a speaker form, which are located in the back of the room, and give them to our communications representative, along with any handouts you may have for the board prior to the conclusion of the items' presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do not comment on an item that is listed on the agenda, we will ask that you please defer your comments until the item comes up on the agenda. Please also either turn off your cellphones or place them on silent mode.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have our stellar student, introduced by Board Member Navarro.
Yeah, come on. So we're recognizing four students today, but one of them couldn't make it. So the one that couldn't make it was Chloe Marsh-Williams. Chloe is an upbeat senior with straight A's. This year, she found her voice in ASB. Chloe is involved, very supportive with her peers in class and out. Her sense of humor and smile shines bright on the Carver campus. She exudes an enormous capacity for leadership and demonstrates strong work ethic. Next, we have Cameron Apilado. Cameron started High School Challenge unmotivated. He showed no interest in graduating, but his sense of humor and charm was evident. As Cameron matured, he went from being a year behind his graduating class to earning A's and B's. Cameron is kind, respectful, and still has a great sense of humor. We are very proud of Cameron as he has demonstrated the two-character of a Phoenix for the 2025 school year. We also have Amara Wilson. Amara is kind, supportive, and supportive friend. She demonstrates great empathy and is the face of well-rounded Carver Phoenix. Amara is graduating with a three. Okay. And last, but not least, Aloisha Glenn. Aloisha, I hope I'm saying that right?
Aloisha.
Okay. Aloisha is the silent all-star. One of the teachers stated that she will trust her blindly. She is adventurous, positive, and extremely knowledgeable about various topics. She aspires to be a creative writer or journalist. Aloisha is graduating with a 3.7 GPA and demonstrates that that's not all we need. All we need is peace, sorry. Thank you. Do you guys wanna say something?
I'd like to thank you for this experience and for being here. And I'd like to thank all the teachers for this chance, for this. Yeah, thank you all.
Anybody else know? Well, we're gonna come down and take pictures with you guys.
If the parents wanna come up, please do. Our guardians, families, friends.
Why you guys told me to do the bus? Why didn't...
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Aloisha?
Aloisha.
Aloisha, I'm sorry.
None of us did it.
All right. Anne, moving on to you, announcements of action taken in closed session.
Good evening, President Singh. There are three announcements coming out of closed session this evening. First, the board adopted Resolutions 2024-2025 A9A and A9B pursuant to Education Code, Section 44929.21, to non-reelect two probationary-certificated employees and authorize the district superintendent to notify those employees of their non-relection by a vote of seven to zero. The other two announcements will come from your superintendent.
Thank you. I am pleased to announce that the board approved the following appointments. By a vote of seven to zero, the board approved the appointment of Brooke Fahy as principal at Phoebe Hurst. Also, by a vote of seven to zero, the board approved the appointment of Dorothy Rama Martinez as principal at John Bidwell Elementary.
All right. Agenda adoption. Do we have a motion to adopt our agenda?
Move.
On, favorite?
Aye, aye.
All right, thank you. Moving on to public comment. Brian, do we have a public comment?
We do. President Singh, we have 14 speakers signed up, and I've grouped them, we've grouped them as best we can by topic. So we'll begin with Maggie Kemper, followed by Lynn Ho and Corinne Calvert.
It's on.
All right, hello and good evening, Board members. Superintendent Allen, Justine. My name is Maggie Kemper, and I'm currently a junior at SES, but you might know me as a representative of the Student Advisory Council. A main aspect of our group is developing research-driven resolutions after identifying common problems on campus. However, I'm here separately to report and bring awareness to one of the main problems I've seen, which is a general lack of disconnect between students and the district. There is little to no communication between adults who make decisions and the students who are profoundly impacted by those choices. Students... Sorry. Student opinion has rarely ever been considered in many of those daily actions, and the little amount of youth voice that is there within the district is constantly limited, tokenized, and ignored. While the SAC is fighting to address the abundant worries of students and get more youth representation within the district, we can only do so much. I come here to recommend that the board and even the cabinet involve themselves more with the students at their local schools. Whether it's attending student-led events or holding high school listening sessions, any steps towards involvement will help. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Lynn Ho, followed by Corinne Calvert.
Good afternoon, Board members. Hello, my name is Lynn Ho. I'm currently a junior at Luther Burbank High School. I want to speak about the elephant room, deportation. The fear that many people have because of ICE, which stands for Immigration and Customs Enforcement. ICE has now become more powerful in affecting students, family, and communities. My school, Luther Burbank, has a large amount of diversity within the student's population. Fifty percent of them are Latino students. Twenty-five percent are African-American students. Twenty percent are Asian-American students, and only 14 of them are white students. ICE will look for undocumented immigrants. However, they will mainly target Latino or people who have brown skin. Half of our school population is Latino students. That is a major risk. Students are in danger, and so are their families and their community. ICE sometimes don't respect their rights. ICE can access entry of protected and public areas like schools, healthcare buildings, churches, streets, parks, courthouses, and more. ICE is everywhere, and so are students. Thank you.
When you've heard your name, if you can prepare to come up as the next speaker leaves. Corinne Calvert is next, followed by Faith Hui, and then Sergio Rafael.
Hello, my name is Corinne Calvert. This is my first time here, it's nice meeting you all. An issue that I believe is impacting SUSD students today is attendance and a means of reliable transport. It's not necessarily a bad thing that you guys do this, but every Sunday afternoon, my school and SUSD seems to have like a message that says, "Your attendance matters," and always attend. But it's not really improving attendance, in my opinion. At least not at my school. There's not much incentive to come to school. Many students face bullying, depression, and anxiety. Some families have three to seven kids and can't take them all to school. And public transportation isn't always the safest option, especially for young children and female identifying individuals. Many of us are tired of hearing, "Your attendance matters," and it doesn't always feel like it because of the major disconnect between us and you guys. What happened to school buses for specific schools, like there used to be? Some schools I know of have vans that can transport students to and from school. And I feel like there needs to be something done. And you have your mascots visit schools, and you post your newsletters and your Instagram posts, but who are they really reaching? To me, it's not reaching us as the students. And I just believe that if we saw more students and more of you guys at our schools wearing the whole SUSD uniforms, they'd be more encouraged to come to school and speak and advocate for themselves. Thank you.
Hi, how are you guys doing? My name is Faith Hui. I'm a sophomore at the HISP and VAP programs at CK McClatchy High School. And I want to address the pressing issue that many of our HISP teachers notified me and my peers about, that being the decline in academic stamina and motivation. So as a student, I can say that this decline in academic stamina is very much intertwined in the increasing pressures of social media, which constantly bombards a student with unrealistic standards of success and what that looks like. So these factors significantly like impacts our mental health, which impacts our overall engagement in learning. Many students are struggling to find a passion in their studies, which leads us to shift our focus away from genuine curiosity. And instead, we try to mold our lives in what fits the media depictions. So to combat this issue, I think that we need to help students rediscover their passion through internships. Although internships offer unique opportunity to connect academic studies to real-life potential careers, they lack accessibility. Internships need to be more legible, accessible, and acknowledged by young freshmen and overall high schoolers in general. So students can get an idea of what they want in life early on and how to achieve it and understand why going to school and focusing on schoolwork is important in reaching their goals. If existing internship programs are not flexible enough, we can take the initiative to create our own internships through collaborations with professors at colleges that specialize in various fields. So prioritizing internships could help students foster renewed passion for learning and help students like me build up the academic stamina we need to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good afternoon, Board members. I'm Sergio, and I come from Luther Burbank. The title of my public comment is, "Believe in Yourself, the Power Within." Ladies and gentlemen, students and educators, we often hear about how important hard work, dedication, and perseverance in achieving our goals. However, that's a basic issue that holds us back from reaching our full potential, our ability to believe in ourselves. As students, we face numerous challenges, from academic pressures to social expectations. We compare ourselves to others, doubt our abilities, and fear failure. But what if I told you that the greatest obstacle to your success is not your grades, your teachers, or your peers, but your own self-doubt? Believing in yourself is not just about confidence. It's about trusting your abilities, your judgment, and your worth. It's about recognizing that you have unique strengths and perspectives that no one else has. When you believe in yourself, you're more likely to take risks, embrace challenges, and push beyond your comfort zone. You're most resilient in the face of setbacks and more open to learning from your mistakes. So how can we cultivate this belief? Start by acknowledging your achievement, no matter how small they may seem. Focus on your strengths rather than your weaknesses. Surround yourself with positive influences, people who support and encourage you. Most importantly, be kind to yourself. Remember that everyone makes mistakes, and it's okay not to be perfect. Your worth and value come from who you are, not from your grades or accomplishments. In conclusion, believing in yourself is a powerful tool that can help you overcome obstacles, achieving your goals, and reach your full potential. So let's make a conscious effort to trust ourselves, to have faith in our abilities, and to celebrate our unique strength. When we do, we'll unlock... Thank you.
Thank you.
And to ourselves, to have faith in our abilities and to celebrate our unique strength. When we do, we'll unlock a world of possibilities and discover that we are capable of achieving greatness and how Hitler, Hitler the older said, "If not now, when?" Thank you.
Thank you.
Next group of speakers on the topic of George Washington Carver. Ludanis Glenn, followed by Marissa Forman, Bryn Davie, and then Scott Preston for six minutes.
Well, I would briefly like to say I'm thankful to Mrs. Kobel and the staff at the school for all that they've done for my daughter, Aloisa Glenn. Excuse me. It's emotional being up here, but she's overcome a lot, and I love her much. And I thank you all for being here, and that's my kind. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marissa Forman, and my son Benny is a sophomore at George Washington Carver. I was drawn to the small size of the school and, more importantly, that it offered a Waldorf curriculum. As a freshman, my son made real connections with his teachers. I know I'm not the only parent who was devastated last year when we lost Mr. Roberto, Mr. Lake, Mr. Sabini, and Mr. Smith. I'm here tonight as a concerned parent because there is a broken connection between GWC and the Waldorf philosophy. George Washington Carver's School of Arts and Science, it's right there in the name, Arts and Science, but my son doesn't have an art class this year. One key emphasis of the Waldorf curriculum is art. How can we provide a Waldorf curriculum to a school when we don't provide the required classes? As a Waldorf school, it is our duty as parents and educators to work together to provide our students with the best possible education and help cultivate these young children into well-rounded young men and women. To truly embrace the Waldorf experience, it needs to start at the top. A Waldorf school must have a principal who supports and encourages Waldorf philosophies. The students deserve to have someone leading the school who is as passionate as they are, who is as excited about tomorrow as they are, and who believes in the importance of ensuring that the correct Waldorf curriculum is being taught. As a parent, I am frustrated. I feel that our students are missing out not only on the curriculum that they deserve, but also on the learning outside of the classroom that is not being provided. After-school activities, clubs, and sports are extremely limited to GWC students. I know I'm not the only parent who wants to or has already stepped up to participate in assisting, coaching, or leading some of these programs. For our students to develop into well-rounded young adults, they need to learn more than just the classroom curriculum. After-school programs teach teamwork, hard work, dedication, and sportsmanship. The school needs a leader who will lead the Waldorf principals. Teachers need to be able to express their opinions and concerns without retaliation, fear of retaliation, and students need a safe environment.
Thank you.
It's just that part.
That's the part I need to speak on?
Yeah, just read that part.
Okay. Hi, I'm Bryn. My daughter is kind of a student at Washington Carver. She... We had a 504 meeting that we showed up for, and no teachers were involved. And it didn't really work out because the information that the principal needed to get on her testing, she hadn't gotten, even with a month of advanced notice. And so my daughter just stopped going to school in December. But I get notifications every day saying that she has missed at least one period today. My daughter also... Well, she did have an art class, but it was an RSP teacher showing them YouTube videos, tutorials, which my daughter was having fun with, but I was very sad to know that she wasn't getting the same curriculum she could be getting. The purpose of this motion, we are submitting a motion to censure Principal Lenisha Kobel due to ongoing leadership issues that undermine the principles of Waldorf education at George Washington Carver School of Arts and Science. This is not a call for immediate dismissal, but a formal expression of deep concern and a request for corrective action. The erosion of Waldorf educational integrity. The school is California's first public Waldorf high school and should uphold holistic, creative, and developmentally appropriate education. Principal Kobel has not completed Waldorf training and actively disregards key pedagogical practices.
Thank you.
Next is Scott Preston, who has three cards for six minutes. Mr. Preston is followed by Rochelle Reed.
Good evening, Superintendent Allen, members of the board. Thank you for the time. I'm here on behalf... My name is Scott Preston. I am a teacher of 17 years at the George Washington Carver School of Arts and Sciences. Our district's only public Waldorf option available. And I am here on behalf of the group of parents who has been speaking and a group of teachers that are expressing some concerns about the site leadership and the way, the direction that our school is headed. So I'm gonna share just some survey results. The parent group put together a short survey, six questions, asking some various aspects about the school. So I'm just gonna share with you the results. These are staff members' responses, not parent responses. The parents have their own set of responses that they have been provided to a communication director. So question number one was, "Do you feel that teachers have had the appropriate training to implement Waldorf education as outlined in the school's charter?" Ninety-three percent said no. Seven percent said yes. That was one respondent. The second question, "Do you have confidence that the current administrator has the background and training required to support staff and provide instructional leadership as outlined in the charter?" One hundred percent responded no. Question number three, again, this is a parent-generated survey. "Do you have confidence that the current administrator has the..." I'm reading the same question. Okay, so, "Do you feel supported and heard by the current administrator? And are you confident in their ability to move Waldorf education forward at Carver?" Again, one hundred percent of the respondents said no. "Do you intend to return, stay at Carver, under the current administrator's leadership?" Twenty-eight percent responded yes. Forty-three percent responded no. Others chose not to respond at all on that one. That's a lot of teachers that are not intending to return to a very small staff already. As far... There were some folks that gave written responses additionally to answering the question of this one. "Do you intend to stay under the current administrator's leadership?" I'm gonna share a couple of responses that were written. "The working conditions at Carver are the worst I've ever experienced. I do not wish to stay at Carver and am considering leaving the educational field entirely." Another respondent, "Do you intend to stay at Carver?" No. "I feel the administrator is bullying me and does not have the opportunity, or has not provided the opportunity to listen." She has Ms. Mitchell, a non-school, non-district employee, doing a lot of the work when she's not supposed to be there. Then the final question was, "Do you fear retaliation from the administrator?" This is why parents and teachers have asked me to respond, to share these. One hundred percent of the respondents said yes, that they fear retaliation from the site leadership. And I am gonna share just one other written response to that question. "Do you fear retaliation?" "I have personally witnessed the principal retaliate against staff members for personal and inappropriate reasons. When staff members have tactfully expressed a difference of opinion, she has resorted to lecturing that person in front of other staff members and writing them up for insubordination for a trivial infraction or something that simply upset her. I think everyone is very afraid of retaliation, and that is why it has been so difficult to speak up and share my opinions." So I'm just sharing these results with you to show you that there is a significant concern amongst both parents and, excuse me, and staff members, teachers, about the direction that our school is headed. Again, we've been here for 17 years. We love our school, teachers, parents, students alike. We love our school, teachers, parents, students alike. We want to keep our school going, and we want to keep the Waldorf methodology in place. If the district is interested in maintaining George Washington Carver as a Waldorf school, we would like the opportunity, we're suggesting that we refund a Waldorf training program. We had initially some, the West Program was in place, Waldorf Education Seminar for Teachers, and that had been run through principals at Alice Burney and at our school, George Washington Carver. But two years ago, I believe, that training was ceased and not, no longer funded. So our staff currently consists of three teachers of the 12. Three teachers have Waldorf training at any, three teachers are fully Waldorf trained. We have been engaging in small bits of training throughout the year this year, but only three teachers at the site are fully trained. And this is, if we want to maintain a Waldorf methodology school here in the district, we need to have the opportunity to have teachers trained in that Waldorf methodology as well as the site leadership. The administrator also needs to be a fully trained Waldorf administrator. I don't need my whole six minutes, so, or unless I've already used that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Final, final two speakers on this topic, Rochelle Reed, followed by Shawna McDaniel.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Rochelle Reed, and I am a district parent. I have two students at Alice Burney, where I was also a teacher there for eight years. I am fully Waldorf trained and did my training at Rudolph Snyder College before it closed. This request is rooted in care for our school and a commitment to preserving the integrity of public Waldorf education. I certainly recognize that the role, the role of an administrator is complex and very demanding, and the added expectations associated with Waldorf education in particular add many additional demands. This intention of me speaking is not to dismiss the efforts that are being and have been made, but to draw attention to the need for more support in order to grow Carver fruitfully. I have an eighth grader, and I really wanted Carver to be a viable option for him, and at this point, I do not see that. Waldorf education emphasizes educating the whole child through trust, collaboration, and developmental alignment. Supporting this vision requires leadership with both Waldorf and public school expertise, especially in instructional matters. So I would ask that the district really consider allowing for a partnership with the administrator, for someone to be a site instructional leader with a Waldorf background. And what that role would do is develop and align curriculum with Waldorf philosophy and district state standards, provide professional development, coaching, and mentorship for faculty, foster collaboration among teachers, recommend appropriate instructional materials and tools, analyze student data, advise school leadership on pedagogical issues from a Waldorf-informed perspective, support school improvement efforts and communicate with the district and broader community, nurture the unique cultural and aesthetic elements central to Waldorf education, and stay current on educational best practices while honoring our Waldorf principles. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
How are you doing? I'm Shawna McDaniel, the founder of the Sojourner Truth African Heritage Museum. One of the things that we do in our community is create mural projects for schools and for our community. I've been working with Ms., with Principal Cobalt for the past year to create four murals at the school dedicated to honor George Washington Carver. And when I walked into the school, I was just blown away with all of the amazing art that was showcased in the school. Someone came up and said, there's no art. There's plenty of art, beautiful art. I work with a variety of schools in Sacramento, throughout Sacramento, and I've never seen art that was showcased, I mean, at other schools, like the art that was showcased at George Washington Carver. Principal Cobalt, she's an amazing woman. She works very hard to bring education and, most importantly, art to the students at that school, and that's why she reached out to the Sojourner Truth African Heritage Museum, because she wanted to bring the best for her students. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have two more speakers for public comment tonight. Ruby Lewis, followed by Rain Smith.
Hello, everyone. As you know, my name is Ruby Rose Lewis. What can I say about George Washington Carver? It is a school that has accepted me when I left McClatchy and gave a chance, and was given a chance at a new beginning. I was someone who also had an award given to me for student appreciation, like these amazing people here. And the teachers support me, and they have pushed me through a lot. And I am happy to be there. However, I can say that there has been some things going on that has been in my heart for a while. I, I miss some of the teachers who used to be there that I only had a year with, such as Ms. Lake, Mr. Lake, and Mr. Pacheco. They are amazing teachers, but they didn't have much experience, and yet they were gone. I, and there has been some things that have came up to school that I feel like most people were silent about. I love this school, but partially, part of me is the pain of pretending that it is all perfect. I do, it is accepting of someone like me who has ADHD and bipolar, but it needs to be a bit better when it comes to security and teachers and not having us have the chance to lose our education. As someone said, it is an art school, and our teachers shouldn't be going in and out for art, and it shouldn't be hard to find a teacher when we had really good ones. And that is all I have to say. Thank you so much for your time.
Hello, my name is Rain, and I am speaking about my current high school, George Washington Carver. At the beginning of my high school years, I went to a different school in a city not too far from here. I went to several, actually. And there I was teased and misunderstood for being transgender. Same-sex couples were unheard of or very rare in my old high schools. When I moved once again to a school called George Washington Carver, Schools of Arts and Science, I was met with a loving community. I felt welcomed and was openly able to continue my transition without fear of judgment. I've never felt so accepted as I do in this school. However, as much as I love the school I attend, security is an issue. We have had several break-ins attacking and vandalizing our open and loving community. We need to continue to maintain a safe environment, and to do this, we need higher security. Our gates are low and line the busy, busy road. Little has been done to ensure this destruction does not happen again, and it has happened again several times. My mother is also upset as she has not been properly notified of these events. Even though it is my senior year, I feel like that future students will likely not receive the same welcome I did. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Moving on to item 8.0, Consent Agenda. A motion to move a consent? Member Rhodes, do you have a second? Member Navarro?
Motion to move forward, removing 8.1 J.
Member Navarro, do you still second that? Okay. All right, we're going to do a roll call vote. We'll start with our student members. Thank you. All right. So we'll do a roll call vote. Go ahead.
Member Jean? Aye. Member Kayata? Aye. Member Benjamin?
Aye.
Member Navarro?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Ibar?
Aye.
Was that Ann that cut that? Thank you. All right, moving on to item 9.0, Communications.
Good evening, members of the board. Board President Saying and Superintendent Allen and Nikki Malevsky, President of the Sacramento City Teachers Association. Here we are with just 19 days left in the school year. And for the last several weeks, we've talked a lot about the statewide event that we are holding this Saturday, May 17th, at the Suzy Chavez Plaza at 11 o'clock to fight back against the cuts to federal funding that does so much to help us provide invaluable services to our students. And we appreciate the district leadership joining together with us to help publicize the event, and we look forward to seeing all seven of our elected school board members present at the event on Saturday. And we hope to see lots of community and students and teachers there joining us to support funding for our schools. Even without these outrageous federal cuts, the failed leadership in Washington DC that has made giving tax cuts to billionaires a higher priority than meals for children, support for students with ADHD and dyslexia, and maintaining Medicare benefits has already had an impact. This failed leadership includes not just Trump and his supporters, those who are proposing the cuts, but also those who claim to stand up for workers and families who are amorally silent at a time when real leadership is needed the most. Yesterday, Governor Newsom released his May revisions to the California budget. And while the cuts to education were not as deep as to some other programs, and certainly does not provide the increase in funding that our schools so sorely need. With only 19 days left in the school year, we are still working to reach an agreement on our new collective bargaining agreement before the end of the school year. With only 19 days to go, we realize that that's a highly ambitious goal, but we are committed, and we believe that the district's team is committed too, to hitting that goal. After many months of discussions, we believe we are very close to reaching an agreement in the initial stage of implementing MTSS, something that we have been working on for a long, long time. But we are also reaching that point in our negotiations and in the reorganization of our district, where some difficult board decisions lie ahead of you. If SEUSD is truly going to become a district that puts students first, and one that puts the highest priority on ensuring that those students have the direct classroom instruction and support that they really need, those values will need to be reflected in the budget and in our collective bargaining agreement. Thank you for your time tonight, and a little special treat. As you know, we have a horrible time recruiting speech and language pathologists. I mean, a horrible time. We spend a lot of money having private contractors work with our students when our own employees can do such a better job. And we are trying to address this issue at the bargaining table. But I want to welcome to the mic and yield my time to a speech and language team that has done more than any people I know in advocating for speech and language pathologists in our district and our students that need their services. They have done so much work to try to get our recruitment team here in SAC City Unified to effectively recruit speech and language pathologists, hours of meetings, hours of going to hiring fairs and trying to convince speech and language pathologists out there to say, hey, coming to work with students in SAC City Unified is so much better than earning all that money in the clinical setting and getting some new hires here. So I'm going to turn over the mic for them to tell you about Speech, Language, and Hearing Month.
Good evening, Superintendent Allen and board. My name is Monica Harvey. I've been a speech and language pathologist in the district for 30 years. This is...
Hello, everyone. My name is Kelly Shere, and I have been a speech and language pathologist for the last five years in the district.
My name is Diane Shab, and I'm a speech and language pathologist with SAC City Unified since 2000.
All right, we have a quick PowerPoint. May is National Speech, Language, and Hearing Month. In California, it's called Better Speech, Language, and Hearing Month. The American Speech, Language, and Hearing Association, or ASHA, is celebrating, whoops, sorry, celebrating 100 years since 1925 in serving people with speech and language needs. Speech, Language Pathologists earn their Certificate of Clinical Competence, or our C's, from ASHA. Early speech and hearing therapy included hearing testing and speech therapy. Some speech and language and hearing facts. Nearly 8% of US children have disorders related to voice, speech, language, or swallowing. 8% to 9% occurrence of speech sound disorders occur in young children. For every 1,000 children born in the United States, about 2 out of 3 have detectable level of hearing loss in one or both ears. And by the time a child reaches 3 years old, 5 out of 6 experience ear infections. Some pictures of SLPs from the 90s. And SLPs collaborated together even before Common Planning Time or Collaborative Time was built into the early out Thursday schedules. Some SLPs work in the classrooms. A student shared a fun therapy session working on the R sound with his speech therapist. In 2004, SLPs met to align speech and language goals to the California Common Core State Standards. SLPs work in speech rooms. Speech, Language Pathologists, SLIPAs, and interns work with students. SLPs with, work with their students and SLIPAs and interns from SAC State and Consumer Niss River, no, ARC, I'm sorry, American River College. Speech, Language Therapy is fun and engaging. These students are using language together in an activity.
Here are some pictures of our current SEUSD SLPs, and it is a group of amazing individuals, and we are very passionate about growing our team. Here are some information that students have shared about what they like about their SLPs and what we help them with, as well as sharing some artwork.
Yeah, we work with, we work with our hearts for our students.
Yeah, we work with our hearts for our students.
Here are a couple of us out in the wild, gathering supplies and tests and materials from the Textbook Services Building Warehouse. And we currently have 41 full-time and part-time SLPs with the district. And we also have six SLPAs, or SLPas, that are district hires. And the other 61 SLP vacancies are currently being filled by private contractors. And I wanted to note that that is both in-person, and this year, about over 20 of them are virtual.
And five SLP vacancies.
Here is a group of us at our state convention in San Francisco, working very hard and diligently to recruit more SLPs to the district. We are very open in sharing how supportive of a group that we are and how much we do want to grow that team of SLPs, constantly talking about, you know, our strong union, our amazing benefits, and our children, the students that we get to work with every day.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next up, we have SEIU. TCS. Teamsters. UPE. Moving on to student member report.
First off, I just want to thank all the students who came out and talked about what they believe to be issues in our district. I think it's a really important time for students to be using their voices to advocate and make change. But at the same time, I want to recognize right now that I think there's a lot of burnout with young people and activism over 100 days into the current federal presidency. And I know a lot of students are kind of losing their initial momentum and feel burnt out with everything that's happening, especially trying to balance what's happening with government and politics, and also balancing things like school and AP testing and extracurriculars. But despite this, I'm really happy that we have the event happening this Saturday at 11:00 a.m. at Cesar Chavez Plaza. And I really hope that students come out and students take the time to really stand together as a community, and that we have this really unique opportunity to fight for education together. I think a lot of times in this district, it can feel like it's like Serna Center versus teachers versus students versus whatever. But I think we can all agree that at the end of the day, what we want is education, and we want education to be accessible in its highest and best quality for all students. And I hope we can really stand together this Saturday and fight for that cause.
All right, I will go next, and I'll open up to any board members who would like to speak. I'll just piggyback on that, on what Member Sugar was talking about, and that is our rally here on Saturday at 11:00 a.m. I spoke yesterday at a community PTO meeting about what cuts mean, and I mentioned that it could look like 10% of our budget federally. And that trickles down to every student, regardless of which part of the city you're in, what type of school site you're at. It will affect our children, it will affect the classroom. And yesterday's May revise from our governor, as SETA pointed out, does not give me a lot of hope that our state is going to be able to supplement the proposed cuts that are likely coming down from Washington. All that to say doesn't mean that we give up, it doesn't mean that we stop. It means that we need to showcase our strength, come together, rally for a common cause. I understand, and I'll call it out, I don't see any of our work as contentious with one another. I think we are all aligned in many ways to make sure our students, our families, our communities are succeeding. And I think we need to put our efforts together and fight the one common issue that we have, and is that is folks taking away free public education. There should be a nonpartisan belief that regardless of where you stand on the political spectrum, you should not, I hope that you do not believe that cutting funds to feeding kids, filling their stomachs, making sure that they come to school and have the ability to succeed because they are not thinking about food, they're thinking about their appetite for learning instead, making sure that kids who have special education needs are not only further kicked down the road or lost in the cracks. This administration doesn't care about that, but I know that all of us collectively absolutely do. And I appreciate all of our board members who have made those videos and have worked collaboratively with our comms team and with SETA, and really showcasing a sign of strength and unity in this moment, which I hope that we can build on. In addition to that, I want to address some of the comments from our students earlier. I've said this before, tell us how you want us to engage. I hear engagement, I hear conversations around, you know, the Instagram posts don't say much to us, then let us know how you want us to communicate. I can attest to the fact that myself and many of these board members do show up to schools, and we want to be seen, and we want to make sure you're heard. If there's a better way to do that, just tell us. And someone addressed ICE raids. This district, and I'm proud to say this, did the first and probably the only Know Your Rights presentations that anyone in this region, and maybe across the state, has even done as a school district. We did seven Know Your Rights presentations at seven school sites, including Burbank High School. And we advertised as best as possible, we did not take role, we did not take any sort of registration information. We understand, and I definitely understand as an attorney, the importance of keeping that confidentiality and not putting yourselves out there, but those are safe spaces, safe spaces for you to learn about your rights. But beyond learning about your rights, this district has a policy. We have not just Know Your Rights cards at school sites, but we also have an actual policy that within every realm of the law that I know, we have created those protections. But there's also bills in the Assembly and the Senate to strengthen those protections. I urge you to look at those bills, and there's one in the Senate and there's one in the Assembly. Read about them and support them. There's opportunities here to go beyond just a school district. You can provide these type of public comments at our state Capitol, and we live where the state Capitol is. You have access to the state Capitol, you have access to your Assembly members and your state senators. They are trying to pass bills that, quite frankly, emulate exactly what this district has passed through our resolutions for safe haven districts. So I'm proud of that fact, I know that we are all united. I see the head nods, I don't think anyone is against what we're talking about here. So I just ask our students if there's ways for us to really talk about the procedure and elevate your voice beyond just our district. I hope that you can talk about what we're doing and what you can do with your voices at our Capitol, because I do think that we have some ears there that are willing to listen and are willing to hear about your experiences, and showcase that united front just from our district and also at the state level. So, March 7th, May 17th, 11:00 a.m., Cesar Chavez Plaza, I really encourage you to come out and join us. Thank you. Member Kayata?
So first and foremost, of course, definitely want to remind everyone, like was just said, hopefully see you all out there on Saturday. Second, I wanted to put out another invitation. So on Tuesday at 5:00, I will be joining several other people at the Sacramento City Council Chambers, and we will be advocating on behalf of the Right Free RT program, which is the free transit program for our youth. As you may know, the district, or I'm sorry, the city used to fund this at the tune of $1 million a year, and last year, they cut their contribution down to $1.5 million a year. And we, along with several others, have filled in the remainder. The city has once again committed to funding $250,000 in their draft budget, and we want them to make sure that that pulls through to their final budget, and also to ask for them to commit to having conversations to make sure we find a long-term plan so that we're not back here every year advocating to them and having folks advocate to us to keep our share going. And then finally, I wanted to return to something I talked about a little bit last time with hopefully more clarity, and that is about our district culture. So frequently here in SAC City, we quote W.E. Deming, and we say, "Every system is perfectly designed to get the results that it gets." And to me, I see our system as one that's appeared to be designed for inaction. I emphasize with the students who spoke here today, with the parents who come before, and many others who come to public comment, and we see out in community, and they complain that this district is broken and needs to be fixed. Before joining this board, I tried to work within the system. I asked for help, I waited, and I was gentle when I pushed back. When that didn't work, I connected with other parents and caregivers to offer suggestions to make things better. Eventually, like many others, I got frustrated and I began demanding change, and that's a little bit of what I'm doing here today. At SAC City, we celebrate our short-term successes, as we should, but we don't seem to be able to address the big picture. Don't get me wrong, we do a lot of good for our community, and there are so many great stories that come from within our schools, yet there are too many stories of kids who are not getting the education they deserve. I found our slow progress frustrating. I perceived a lack of urgency in addressing our big challenges and focusing on our little things that we can accomplish. I'm truly convinced that if we don't constantly push and have uncomfortable conversations to make sure we change, that that change won't come. I'm not saying this to call anyone out or even to tear down the system. I'm saying this to bring this out into the open, hopefully in a clear way. I know that my desire for real change is shared by everyone else here. Together, we can change this system if we want to and we commit to it. So to the board, I have a kind of a call to action, which is that we recommit to our governance work as one of our top priorities. This will mean that we spend more time together, our Saturdays might be a little more busy, and that we have really difficult conversations. And like I said two weeks ago, to the community, hold us to this. Make sure that we commit to this, and that if we slow down or we falter, that you remind us that this is important, because we need to address these big challenges. And that's it.
Sorry, Member Navarro?
So I just want to echo our members and student member about Saturday. Please be there. So I think there was a percentage mention in terms of budget, I think it was 9% to 10%. In terms of numbers, it's probably between 60 and 70 million dollars. So it's a big chunk. And like Member or President Singh mentioned, California, the state of California is not going to be able to pick up any of that. So we really need to be strong and show up on Saturday. And then, so I wanted to talk about a film screening that I attended. The Rosemont Math Teachers put on a film screening, a movie called Counted Out: Math is Power. And in terms of doing something, I think the idea is that after watching this movie, we all have a different perspective on math. And the idea is also to start a focus group or support group monthly. When I get more details about that, I'll invite everybody, but just wanted to let you guys know that that's out there. And the Rosemont teachers are putting it out, I think they're getting help from a nonprofit in SAC State, but everyone in the district is welcome. And I know that a lot of you out there would want support on math, so please come out. I'll get you more details. When those details come out, I'll share them on my page, and also I'll try to share them on the SAC City Unified School District webpage. And that's it for now. Thank you.
Member Rhodes?
Thank you. So last week, at Rosa Parks, K-8, we were able to get 38 families signed up for the CalKid program. Now, when you say 38, it might seem like a trivial number to the around 600 students that we have there, but what that equates to, if you guys haven't heard of the CalKid program, CalKid program, there's 500 to $1,500 for students, and an account currently from the state of California, that's already there, sitting there. So you talk about 38 students, at a minimum, you're talking about $19,000 that are going directly back into pockets of students for their post-secondary education, and that is phenomenal. And so we were able to hold that with our community school cohort there, along with Sarah Lynn, Megan, Greater Sacramento Urban League, and bringing all these partners together. And it really shows how community schools can deeply impact not only the educational outcomes, but the outside indicators to in-school day success. And one of the things, like I always say, we're always fighting is poverty and access to resources. And so it's very exciting that we're able to do that. I'm looking forward to doing more across our district, but definitely in the south side of the city. And if any of my colleagues would like to work on any of that work in their area, holler at me, I'm right here to do it, and I'm looking forward to doing more of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Rhodes. Real quick, before I sign off to the next item, I just want to remind folks that one of the commitments that were made was around our committees. We have a couple of committees, some committees that are new, our Policy Committee, our Committee Around Special Education. Then we have a ton of vacancies that we are all committed to filling and making sure our commitment stays strong to that. So around that, there will be messaging going out over the next couple of weeks, most likely, asking folks, asking community to come help us fill those spots. We want to make sure that we find community folks, and those of you who care about our district, to join those committees. And then also, we hope to have everyone in place. So when our school starts, our school year starts up again at the end of August, that we actually have some committees ready to go, and we can jumpstart our process of making sure that we are not only listening to you all, but also being collaborative in our approach. So it's not only, I guess, a call to action, but also staying it out loud to make sure you all know that we are committed to that. So please keep an eye out, and we'll be working with our comms team to make sure that information does get to you. If you have any questions, of course, reach out to us directly if you're interested in joining any of those open vacancies around our district for those committees. Thank you. Moving on to item 10.1, Recognition of Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And it looks like my name is on it. So the recognition, I just want to make sure that when we talk about recognizing community, I think, I've said this, and I'll always say this, that these months exist because these folks are not celebrated throughout the year, and they're definitely not celebrated in the original intent or fabric of this country, right? We create months because we're trying to catch up on years and years of the work that other communities have done on our backs. And I think about AA, NHPI Month, really trying to, I think, dive deep on the backs of the Asian community that built our railroads, that were unlawfully sent to internment camps during World War II. And I think recognizing a month to make sure that we all continue to find some grace for each other, to continue to understand that we are all included in that entire idea of what we're trying to create in this country, is really important. I know we have so many staff members who have Asian Pacific Islander Native Hawaiian heritage. So this is really a thank you, a recognition that we see you, but also in this time, especially in these really tumultuous times in our country, that as we are being erased at the federal level, that you find some grace to look around and understand the unique cultures that make your own city and your own community really what they are. We live in Sacramento, which has one of the largest Asian community populations in California and actually in the United States. So whether it's our Japanese community, or Vietnamese, Mong, Punjabi, South Asian, all of us, I know that we have so many contributions that we've made to this city and even into this district. And I want to just give a special shout-out to the Asian Pacific American Bar Association of Sacramento, with whom we conducted those seven Know Your Rights presentations that I talked about earlier. AVAS was the first organization to step up and state that, as a bar association, they wanted to work with us. And honestly, without them, we probably wouldn't have pulled off seven Know Your Rights presentations in seven weeks. They were instrumental in ensuring that they were able to provide accurate immigration information for our communities. We had immigration attorneys with background and experience, and that actually was truly one of the most important factors in making sure our Know Your Rights presentation stood out from the generic Know Your Rights presentations that are often presented to our communities. Having actual attorneys, folks who practice... Having actual attorneys, folks who practice in that space, and just again, a bar association that has a huge Asian American presence and has a huge Asian American membership that really took on this, this work. I think it's a perfect opportunity to recognize them and thank them. And they're actually doing another presentation tonight, which is why they're not here. So we will find a way to honor them and recognize them and get a plaque over to them. But I really wanted to thank them publicly and encourage you all to get to know your local bar associations, especially ABAS, and understand that these are folks who are voluntary members of these bar associations and they're doing the good work every single day. You might not see it, but folks are working really hard to make sure that we can create change at the local level. And I want to give them their flowers for the work that they've done. And appreciate everyone. I see faces out here who are at those presentations. Thank you for attending and thank you for continuing to support our communities, regardless of where they come from or how they get to this country. So thank you so much. So moving on to item 10.2, we have the Black African American Advisory Board Annual Update. Mr. Gladney. I see you dressed up.
Ish, you know, adjacent. I was out with the kids earlier, so I was in sweats, so. You know, and I don't get an opportunity to dress up as much anymore, so I take advantage. Good evening, I'm Terrence Gladney, the Chair of the Black African American Advisory Board for Sacramento City Unified School District. I'll run it back. Uh, can we get the volume? Good? Okay, we'll see.
We want freedom by any means necessary. We want justice by any means necessary.
And can you also turn on the closed captions for the future videos? Thank you. May 19th this year, Martha 100th birthday of Malcolm X Malik El Shabazz, pioneer, too often understated or ignored in African-American and American history. He was born in Omaha, Nebraska. He was a smart and focused student. He was actually the valedictorian of his school. I've been dreaming of being, becoming a lawyer, but his dream was crushed by prejudice when his favorite teacher told him that was not realistic goal for him. He would end up dropping out of school and moving on with his mother to Boston and become involved in drugs, prostitution, and gambling. And that is the result of this American education system. When we look at young Malcolm, too often the district, too often the system, the American education system, sees that prisoner before he has a chance to blossom. They don't see the orator, they don't see the pioneer, they don't see the advocate, they don't see the actionary man. Those are troubling images to watch and they're not that far in our past. But we celebrate that we are making some progress through renamingings and some greater progress in things such as hiring Principal McGregor, who's a very powerful and just brilliant woman. But we know that we still have unfinished homework. Things that happened as far back as February 2020 are still unaddressed and have come up as recently as May 1st at this very podium. Our educators are feeling the same impacts as our scholars. And it is unjust. It's not freedom for people to endure that and to have it lingering in the form of trauma that they're carrying around every day on their shoulders and in their hearts and in their spirits. These are educators that are in charge of teaching our young babies. And if we don't make them whole, then how can they make our babies whole? Our role and purpose, our role and purpose is to advise you all, as well as the superintendent, regarding accountability of services, programs, policies, and resources that directly impact the district's school culture and climate of our classrooms and the academic, socio-emotional, and personal outcomes for Black and African-American students. And to review, monitor, and evaluate the district's implementation of the board-adopted task force recommendations as of May 16th, 2019. And consider other possible strategic areas as appropriate. Our connection to the district and our support system is Mr. Danny Rullari, who is our SCUSD liaison, Board Trustee Michael Benjamin, who was preceded by outgoing Board President Gracie Phillips, and Superintendent Lisa Allen. And previous to that, we had support from Vincent Harris and Iris Taylor, Dr. Iris Taylor. Can you run this slide back and restart it, please? No, it's set to a timestamp. It's unfortunate that the volume is conveniently not working. That conversation was had on March 5th of this year, right upstairs at the Washington Room. Subsequent to that, on April 29th, we received in response to a conversation with our board, with our staff liaison, what I uplifted in the space last meeting. The President Singh and Board Member Benjamin were out speaking with Ms. Leon. Where I uplifted that apparently our liaison's responsibilities on behalf of Black students as our liaison for the BTRAB do not align with the district's overarching priorities according to its direct supervisor. Although we injected African-American studies as a possibility and a priority in this space, somehow we are bystanders and will also be included in work. So when the memo goes out that it's everyone's work, either it's unheard or it's unacceptable. That was the response. This was the initial conversation, or liaison did reach out to us. Previous years, every other time that we've been up here, I've been involved in every annual update and we've always had 30 minutes of presentation and 20 minutes of discussion. I understand that things may change in terms of you guys' governance and operation of these meetings. But initially, we were told that our time was reduced to 10 minutes of presentation and five minutes of discussion, to which we had a response that it had been modified and increased. But you know, it's a lot like gas prices or impacts of tariffs, right? We raise something really high and then lower it back and, you know, or lower it really low and then raise it up and say, shouldn't you be happy with what we're giving you? It's a little bit better than what you were going to get. We asked for data and support around this very presentation. So you won't see too much data. We received one report and we're told that basically we would be connected to additional departments to get support around other things such as staffing numbers and everything else that were included in the recommendations from 2019. This was our response. Essentially, that is unacceptable. We asked for clarification and we asked why is there a focus in this very boardroom on equity, on equality or equal distribution of minutes instead of equity? That's what this district purports to stand on. But yet, in practice, that's not what we received. We received really no response to any of these questions, including where our role or where our liaison's role as liaison to us lies in his list of priorities. We were never connected with the HR representatives either, so we don't have that data. So we wondered why, as of tomorrow, six years after you guys or the body you represent adopted these recommendations, why they're still not implemented? I hope that this picture is a little bit clearer and you guys understand why the conversation seems to be repeating itself every time I stand at this podium. And just because it's my voice, I represent all of the young people here. I represent all of the young people I serve at school sites. So if you guys are not going to be responsive to me, then I suggest that before we leave this room, you guys look them in the eye and just be honest that you're not willing to act on their behalf. I'll just paraphrase because I don't think we're going to be able to hear it. Dr. Allen was just thanking us for the work and for the push that we give, stating her intention to stand beside us and support us. And she said that time matters, right? So we're talking about the time of a board agenda or the time it takes to implement recommendations. What's allowable and what's urgent, what is acceptable?
We need you. We need you as partners in this work. It is Mr. Gladney, our assistant, who's been going on for hundreds of years in general. Mrs. [inaudible]. I walk down under the urgency of the work at the moment. And urgency is a big word for me. Because there's a sense of urgency around what we're doing in this district and what we're doing for Black kids. And it's not fast enough for me. It is not. I know that the sentiments of this room. Is it moving? Yes. Is it moving fast enough? No, not, not, not.
This week of Black History, tomorrow marks six years since the Board of Education of Sacramento City Unified adopted the recommendations that were established to change the outcomes for Black students in this district. At the time, we had support of Dr. Robert Fisher, who was a district provided facilitator, as well as cabinet-level staff, being Vincent Harris and Dr. Iris Taylor. If you look at the timeline, the initial timeline was set to be between one and three years for all of the recommendations. Even if we factor in COVID, here we are six years later. I was meeting with some of my young scholars this morning at San Brandon, my leadership program. And I let them know that, you know, the target was one in three years and that was 2019. And I asked them to sort of guess how long it took until the recommendations were implemented. And they were very generous, kind-hearted, and they said maybe 2022, 2023. And then I told them, they're still not implementing. What will we do or what do we do to our scholars who have incomplete assignments? Do we give them that forgiveness? Do we give them grace? Do we allow them to focus on just one assignment for the balance of a school year and say that you're making progress? This was a timeline, clearly laid out, time invested by a number of stakeholders, representing a number of organizations, very well versed in the experiences of African-American students and very well versed in the inner operations of this district and the outer greater landscape. When I look at this, it is a lot of low-hanging fruit. But fruit will hang there unless you pick it. And we're standing still just looking at it die on the vine. This is what our K-5 students get, right? Very specific identification of areas of deficiency. We expect that their parents and everyone in their network supports them to come up to speed. If we were to rewrite this, there would be a lot of issues with the performance of this board and the staff in terms of the urgency to which Dr. Allen spoke or lack of urgency. When we look back at the resolution adopted February 1st, 2024, there were some things that were omitted. A lot of them were actionable items that at the time we were told, you know, you guys as a board or the board didn't want to operate based on resolutions. So everything in red was omitted, which really just speaks to our willingness to be partners, specific timeframes, hiring practices that we know are necessary given the mass exodus of so many Black educators in this district, all stricken. The identification of a space to allow Black students, families, and staff to be welcome. If we look at Ms. Leon, we know that that is not happening even for our educators. But the good news is, just this year, you guys as a board adopted this resolution, which is very specific and actionable items. You guys are demonstrating your ability to be nimble, to be actionable, and turn things around very quickly because we know that these things happen based on this resolution. After the resolution we presented, we know that in 2023, the resolution which we framed ours on was implemented and we know that all of these things happen. So we know that it's possible and that is great news. The precedence is set from the same resolution. You guys doubled down the next year and stood on, stood on business. You guys did the same thing from, from the previous year from that resolution. And then this year, you guys had a presentation that said you're going to continue standing based on what that resolution carried. This is from May 16th. At the conclusion of our annual report one year ago, the entire room stood in solidarity for Black students. So now we have the board who has acted and shown a capability to do what's necessary. We have the superintendent who says that she's willing and understands the urgency to do this work. We have staff that, you know, reports to the superintendent and we have the community standing in solidarity with the BTRAB. That's all outstanding news. And it means that the time is now, just like the letter I sent a couple of years ago or last year from Laura Babbitt, who's a school board member from Berkeley. She said the time is now for African-American studies curriculum. The time is now, tomorrow marks six years. Six years of outstanding items from something that was targeted to be a three-year timeline at most. And the interesting thing is the things that were targeted for three years, most of those are completed. They include the establishment of the BTRAB and our parent engagement committee. So a lot of that work, we've taken on as partners. But a partnership requires two-way agreement and two-way effort. Malcolm X said, "I for one believe that if you give people a thorough understanding of what confronts them and the basic causes that produce it, they'll create their own program. And when the people create program, you get action." It is time for action. The outstanding thing is that our district chose people from the community to create that program that came in the form of the recommendations. Their expectation in 2019 is that they would be implemented. But they did also understand that there were some potential barriers. They foretold our reality today. Concerned that the district will fail to implement recommendations. Need for differentiated recommendations to support the diverse African-American community. A legacy of mistrust of district intent, an aggressive timeline, lack of political will, a worry about prioritization with fiscal, within fiscal and global health crisis, and the need for community feedback, particularly student engagement. In 2022, our immediate steps were to hopefully implement the recommendations that were outstanding aggressively. We also noted that we required additional staff support. Our immediate next steps are obviously to complete the implementation of the API African-American Studies curriculum, to have an urgent focus on repairing the literacy crisis for Black students. Studies curriculum, to have an urgent focus on repairing the literacy crisis for Black students, and we need increased support from you all, that's the board and staff. We have justifications listed that come in the form of policy and precedent, of course, and we obviously have the roles that are responsible for making those things happen. We are listed everywhere because we are willing partners and we are doing the work and are willing to do the work. We are asking for either additional or an alternate staff liaison because of the stated obstacle or issue with capacity. That's direct from his supervisor. So if it doesn't meet his capacity, then we do need support that will meet the needs of these young people and others. There are outstanding deliverables, which we have worked with you guys on before, and we will work with you guys to make sure that they are implemented. When we look at the balance of next school year, on the right is the initial recommendations from the board agenda item, and there are aligned timeframes, again, that were stricken. But the great news again is that we've shown that as a district, we can meet timeframes. And these were very generous. These are 90 days where you guys had things that were going to be done in 30 days. We know things happen in some of those other resolutions within days, hours, weeks. We granted 90 days, so we would like these reintroduced to the forefront of district We want to see prioritization in the LCAP. Another thing that Dr. Allen shared with us is that the conversations are happening in rooms about Black students and how things affect Black students, but we need things to move beyond just verse and to purse. We need to show that the dollars are behind the words. We need to see action that comes with resources and funding that states our intentions, just like our budget in our LCAP does. We will not stand still. When we say by any means and all means necessary, achievement is the achievement of the recommendations and the achievement of these young scholars and others. We will work parallel with you, and if there is a willing partner, we will intersect. Most of the same things we uplifted on the previous slide as work for the district, we have taken on that work, although it's not our direct responsibility, other than the fact that we owe these young people an opportunity equal to what other scholars receive in this district.
We do have nine speakers signed up on this topic.
And we're going to withdraw those comments. They were there just to be prepared for the system that's in place. Again, we're disenfranchised of 15 minutes, but we're going to withdraw them. Thank you.
All right. Any comments, questions for Mr. Glad?
Weekend, yes. Go ahead.
I'm going to turn my mic on. First of all, thank you for your work, right? I know it's courageous, right, to step up and lead these efforts. I think what happens for me, though, I think we're at a space where you and I have had discussions, right? It's time to move this work on. I don't feel like, I feel like the data that we might be looking for is what gave us the 12 recommendations.
Absolutely.
And I doubt if the data has changed that much since. So at this time, like Elhas Malik El Shabazz would do, it's time to get into action. I met with Daniel and Ashley, and I believe at this point, we're building out two buckets, right? Through B-A-B, which is our literacy bucket, which is our overall umbrella, right? Where we're looking at, you know, our literacy rates for our babies throughout the district, and then the specific one we're doing is we're building out African-American Studies course. We sat and we talked about coming up with ways to create processes that can move these 12 recommendations along. And so we came up with, or we've talked about possibly entertaining this DACI, right? Where we recognize a driver, an approver, the contributors, and those that need the information. In meeting with Daniel and Ashley, we were able to look at the two processes that approved this course, and they were in agreement that we could mail these possibly, okay? So I think what happens is that, you know, I want to increase the conversations that look for ways that we can collaborate so we can move this forward. I don't think, I don't want to get hung up on the data, because the data is what got us to 12 recommendations. We know what the data is going to say. It's now our time to utilize the leverage that came from the 12 recommendations to start presenting possible solutions and resolutions to these things, right? So we can get our babies, you know, moving towards the goals that they need. And so I'm excited about presenting, you know, allowing me to be the liaison to B-A-B, and I look forward to, you know, working closer so we can start to report out, you know, some of the things that we are moving. That's what I really want to do. So, and again, I thank you for your time and your work, and I look forward to, you know, moving forward.
Thank you. And to your point, yes, we, you know, we know what the data is going to be, but, you know, in a district that claims to be data-driven, in the absence of data, then we are just kind of throwing things at the wall and we're not measuring. So the data is critical, at least in the sense of measuring what we're doing and implementing to make sure that we have an impact. So in our request for the data, it is specifically tied to the recommendations so that we can have a baseline, but then also this, so that we can build out whatever the reporting structure looks like, you know? Is it monthly? Is it quarterly? And then, once that's established, that will outlive my service in this capacity, and it sets up a framework and a foundation so that whoever's in this space, whether it's me or any of the young people or any of the other members on our board, have a framework by which they can, you know, operate, but also continue to improve it. And that really just is our stated role. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Iwada.
Thank you for the presentation, Terrence. I'm hearing everything that you're saying, and I know we've advocated together for many years. My question to you is, as a board, how can we be more connected to student voice? Because I know that there are things we can do, like we can plan for forums or listening sessions, right? But really, me personally, the richest conversations that I have had with Black students specifically, where I walked away and felt like I got something that can help me advocate better, were in conversations where I was like at a basketball game, talking to a kid who was sitting in the bleachers next to me, right? And so I want to make sure that I'm intentional, because you're right, and I'm grateful that you call us out. So let me know how I can do that immediately, while also looking at how we can sit down and talk about what it looks like moving forward, so that it's an ongoing thing, and so that we can plug it into other processes, right? Like LCAP, like community schools and such.
Yeah. I think that, you know, the blessing that I have doing the work that I do is I'm around young people every day and I learn from them every day, because I can be vulnerable and share. So when I ask them about how long they thought it took to implement recommendations, like I got their honest feedback, and I'm around them and I can see how they respond to certain things, and then I can articulate in a way that they can understand. I think far too often, even our B-A-B space, we tend to be adult-centered, right? Getting out of a board meeting at a certain hour doesn't speak to the specific needs of students, because we can't quantify what that is. When I go and deal with my young people every day at Brandon or Cabrillo or Pony or even just across the district, I have to meet them where they are, and that can change day to day or sometimes minute to minute. If they're in a space where they are sort of, you know, just like combustible with another student or whatever, then I have to figure out how to navigate around that. But the problem is, we don't have this too often, unless it's a quick celebration or acknowledgement to sell a student. There's nothing in the board agenda that is in a language that they can understand, so then how can they translate that to something that we need? So we have to be more mindful, and that's our intention, is to do more listening sessions directly with youth. I go over board agendas and show them meetings and everything else so that they can ask questions, but also understand the impact, so hopefully they can be in the seat that Justine is in one day. But until we literally are vulnerable and willing enough to change the system to meet them where they are, then we're always going to be estimating what they need instead of hearing what they need, and they'll tell us. Thank you.
Thank you, bro. I don't see any comments, but I just want to thank you, Terrence, and then also for recognizing that tomorrow's Malcolm X Day.
The 19th.
I was on the 16th.
The 16th is the six-year anniversary of the adoption of the recommendations. Malcolm X was born on May 19th. And I was lucky enough, again, growing up in Berkeley, my intermediate school, so we went K-3, we went 4-6. I went to Malcolm X Intermediate School. So when we talk about, you know, language, right? The language that changed a valedictorian to a prisoner? We talk about the languages on the front of a building matching what happens inside a space? Like going to a school called Malcolm X, I had no choice but to every day have that name in my head. And I may have been too young at the time to fully grasp like the impact that he had, but it at least made me curious enough to know that I wanted to know more, right? So there's things that we can do in terms, again, in terms of language. One of our board members, when we were looking at one of the previous board meetings, said, "No time to lose is right behind you guys." We see it, but sometimes I don't know if you guys see it, right? So again, as adults, we see things in front of us, but we're not always looking 360 degrees around what's happening, when kids are literally yelling to us what we actually need to do. So, you know, it does take, again, just like a level of vulnerability, yeah, and graciousness.
So I think I'll say something that maybe folks don't want to talk about, right? And we're talking about examples of other resolutions that you have provided here for us, right? We talked about the transgender rights resolution. We talked about the tenure rights resolution. But I also want to point out that those resolutions, some of that low-hanging fruit you're talking about, right? Those resolutions are not the same depth of call to action that we're asking for here. And I'm not saying that's not possible, but I do want to recognize that a resolution that says we're going to notify all staff about X, Y, and Z. What we're trying to do here, and some of the things that haven't been mentioned for years at this point, before any of us were seated, is creating tangible change and percentage shifts for the outcomes of our Black students specifically, Black and African-American students, to get them to a space where our percentages, I'm looking at this moving from 17% to 25%, right? In mathematics, I'm just trying to, I can zoom in and still see the numbers. For me, when I'm looking at the resolutions, for me, I'm thinking, what are the actual items in those resolutions to get to that specific?
And that's what I think that the target is in terms of the B further resolved. So the ones that have highlighted in red were omitted. So the one at the bottom literally says that within 90 days, site principals will be reminded about something that already exists, and it wasn't included. But if I go back to, if I go back to the examples that I uplifted, a lot of these things, I mean, it covers the entire scope of the district. So it's saying that after-school providers have to sign a new agreement. Superintendent has to report back on compliance. Like that is the scope of the district, and literally there's a clause in our resolution that was omitted that just said, hey, remind principals that this support is in place so that they have a guideline. So I think that that's the thing, like I have track athletes, I coach track, and if kids are focused on, I need to run this time, then they forget about the mechanics, they forget about the effort. And our resolution is based on building like a foundation of technique, technical components that will get us there. We're not focused so much on the numbers, because the numbers will grow. If you look at the videos that were uplifted with Mark Harris, in one of those interviews, he said, right? We know that some of those incidents were committed or, you know, perpetrated by Black students. One of the things he said is that that comes from a lack of knowledge of self, right? So when we talk about implementing African-American Studies curriculum, it's to address everyone, because if you know yourself, then you know your neighbor. And then, once we do this right, then we open it up for Asian Pacific Island Studies, right? Chicano Latino Studies, and everyone else. When I talked last meeting about being at the epicenter of trauma, resolutions like this are enormous, because they show the capability of our district. But meanwhile, we're sitting under that building that I talked about, wondering, when are you guys just going to give us a little bit of relief? Because there is a direct alignment between these actionable things and the things that were omitted, and there's no clear justification as to why not. The district shall, within 30 days, talk to labor partners, which is uplifted as the biggest obstacle to a change in progress in this district you guys had in a resolution and stood on it. In 30 days, and we said it, 90 days, at a principal's meeting for people that are employees of you, we just want to just gentle reminder that, hey, there's support in place to better serve Black students. So I'm looking for the justification as to why. I mean, we, you know, and without a justification or without a clear definition, then we have to connect our own dots, and that's what we have been doing, is doing the work on our own, and we're looking for someone to reach across the table and say, we actually are truly partners. But this doesn't speak to this, because again, this is what we built that 2024 resolution on. If we said, this is amazing, our district can do these things now, and we have the amount of mobility and flexibility and the capacity to do actionable things, because I saw that resolution and immediately there was turnaround. Immediately, I saw signage at school sites, and I said, our district is standing for something right now. Now is our time to activate that in other spaces. And then there was a pushback, and then the following year, there was a similar type of resolution that happened. So I'm saying, right now, we're asking to be, we're asking to be made whole.
I mean, I can only speak for myself, and I'll continue this conversation with you right now. That is, I have no issue with us putting into here and including resolution language that talks about ensuring that students are seen and heard. I am specifically mentioning another aspect of that language on why things were admitted or why I believe something should be admitted, because I want to make sure things are achievable. And that doesn't mean any of these numbers are achievable. The actions that we can take as a board are to ensure that staff is informed, and if there are things that should have happened or should have been said, we can continue to have that discussion. But again, I also want to thank the fact that, when I went to that meeting, that last meeting, I felt that there was an energy. I felt that with Michael Benjamin coming in, that we are creating a new sense of what we're trying to achieve, and I want to figure out a way for us to get there and also start finding those achievable opportunities, resolution or not. I want to make sure it's actually within our goals to uplift our kids, because I'm not, I'm going to be the first one to say, and I've always said it, if we uplift our Black kids, we're going to uplift all our students. That's not a slogan, right? That's a fact, that that's how it works.
And in Resolution 3475, those numbers actually came from staff, just to be clear. Like, on the right is the recommendations adopted in 2019. On the left, the top, be a further resolved. Those numbers came directly from staff with no involvement or no consultation with us. So that seems like it needs to be a conversation between the board and staff, because again, like when there's comments that we hear or a statement that Superintendent Allen makes in a space of our meeting, that charges us up and we're excited, right? We're excited, we have renewed optimism, but then to have something that's in direct conflict to that, that's operational transformation that needs to happen, and that's independent of us. We can't control who responds to what, who acknowledges the memos that go out, who's operating in the same space. And I think that what we've seen sometimes is that there is a disconnect between what happens here and then what happens out at the school site. And I understand this in the Norman's district and there's so many layers, but that's why historically, this committee has had success, because we had cabinet-level support to where we didn't have a supervisor. Supervisor was a superintendent, right? So the number of layers between like things that can get lost in translation were so minimal that there was a confidence that happened, and there was actually follow-through on what was committed to, not some transformation that happened, because it was uncomfortable for someone or just a concern about capacity or ability to complete it.
Thank you.
And just real quick, I'm sorry, I just wanted to thank all the young people that came out, CG, Keira, Kiara, Sophia, and also all of our board members. You know, it's not easy for them on a school night, so maybe I'll give them a homework assignment to maybe, you know, watch the meeting and tell their teachers maybe why they were late on their homework or something. Hopefully, it won't take six years.
Thank you, Terrence. Moving on to 10.3, we have our Expanded Learning Opportunities Program Plan Update by Manpreet.
Respected Board President, Honorable Board Members, and dear Superintendent, I am Manpreet, Director Youth Development Support Services. So these are some of the acronyms that I may use during my presentation. I will try to minimize the number of acronyms in my presentation. So what is Expanded Learning Opportunities Program? It funds before-school, after-school summer program. It was established in 2122. It was established in 2122, prioritize our underserved communities. And we can use this fund, this funding is primarily for elementary students TK through six. However, we can use this funding for other grades when we are successful in providing services to all our students in elementary grade levels who want, needs these services. Who is prioritized? So local education agencies with 75% or above unduplicated rate, they are, they get rate one, which is higher, and they are prioritized. We, SCUST, we are rate two because our unduplicated rate, percentage rate is less than 75%. And the students who are English learners and eligible for free and reduced lunch rate and foster youth are prioritized under this. So YDSS, our annual budget is 34 to 36 million. And it's basically a combination of these three funding sources. First one is ACES, After-School Education and Safety. It's a product of Part 49. And then 21st Learning, Community Learning Centers Grant. This is federal funding, and we don't know what will happen next year with this funding. State funding is ongoing. And the third funding part is Expanded Learning Opportunities Program funding. And today, we are only going to talk about this funding part. So what is required through ELOP? We need to provide at least nine hours each day, which means six hours the regular school day, and then we have to provide after-school, before-school. We are easily surpassing these nine hours because we provide before-school and then after-school. So, so we are doing good in this area. All services should be in-person, no virtual programming. ELOP does not support any virtual programming. Must provide programming on all school days and 30 intercession days. And I do want to mention one thing that all of our other grants, ACES, 21st Century, those are given to us on 180 days. However, our district is operating this year 188 days and next year again 188 days. So eight extra days we fund from ELOP because we are providing services each and every day. And all these programs should be ACES grant, 21st Century grant, and ELOP should be considered one comprehensive program. We can provide program at one site as long as all of our students have access, or we can provide program at multiple sites. We do not have this issue because during the school year, we provide at all of our elementary schools. So our students have no issues with transportation or having access to the program. So what are some of the essential components? Actually, two. One is academic intervention, literacy, math, and credit recovery because we provide programming to high school students, to homework assistance and academic intervention. And the second part, which is enrichment, which means healthy lifestyle, performing arts, youth voice, outside presentations, workshops, sports, athletics. And the reason why I'm here today because the plan asks us to review the plan every three year and get it approved by the board. So this is my second time being in front of the board and getting it re-approved. So what has ELOP done for us? Sac City always had expanded learning programs. I think started, first one in our district was 1998. But ELOP has expanded all those programs. They were at the smaller scale, but now if you look at the number, we have almost 7,000 students enrolled in after-school program and attending program every day at elementary sites. 345 our little kiddos TK and then 990 kinders. Before-school, 1,605, middle school, 2,000, high school, more than 4,500. If you add all this number, every day in after-school, we are serving roughly 15,000 students. And this number does not include before-school. And the reason is, I did not add before-school to this number because I also know that some of those before-school students might be in after-school. So I wanted to stay true to the data and just kept before-school separate. How has ELOP improved support to students and families? So that was our students. Now, all those students are being served, but we need staff. So this is our monthly PDM payroll for YDSS. Look at this, 400-plus certificated staff, 35 classified staff, 175 student ambassadors. And on top of that, we also work with our athletics department. So we have expanded our athletics and sports offerings to our elementary and middle school students. We offer 12 different sports offering for all middle school students. So I do want to mention that ELOP is funding our elementary and middle school sports. 10 program providers who help us serving all those 16,000-plus students. So not only that, we also have 30-plus supplemental providers. One of them is barn driving school. All of our high schools love this barn driving school because it teaches our students driving. They pay the, they pay the fee too. So, and we contract with them, and they take the students to DMB to get the test done. So, so it's a beloved program. North Cala School of Hearts. These are just some names that we, I mentioned them up there. TCG, All Things Pretty, Food Literacy. We teach archery too to our students. So look at our expansion in summer offerings. Currently, our HR, HR has posted 35 summer admin positions, 367 certificated positions. We don't know if these are enough because our numbers are pretty high for summer too. 79 classified and some certificated positions as they will be providing support staff and nine offers of programming every day at all of our 25-plus elementary sites that are, that are community sites. So I do want to mention over there, over here, that before pandemic, we met with our research and evaluation department. We set these five elements that this is how we are going to evaluate, evaluate our expanded learning programs. We did a valuation before pandemic, and then pandemic came, and then everything changed. Attendance was very fluctuating, up, down. Sometime we were in virtual programming too. So we will be meeting at the end of this year with our research and evaluation. They are aware of these five elements. And during summertime, we will evaluate our programs on these five outcome measures. We will definitely provide the report to the board too, once we have it. So that is with our district's research and evaluation department. Last year, we did an evaluation from an outside provider, we, LPC Consulting. So as you see, we have some pluses too, but then there are also some things that we need to improve on. LPC, they interviewed principals, and we were not present in those interviews. So it is impartial. So our principals, parents, students, they all said that our expanded learning programs are pretty safe. And it's nice to have all those extra calculators, homework help during expanded learning. But then there was some negative, not negative, I would say improvements that we have to do. And one such is we need to provide more time for homework help. We usually do one hour, but parents want the kids to complete homework and then go home. And then they want better food, fairer rules. Like some students may have thought that our rules are not very fair. And more sports activities. And then they also said that ACES and ASSETs staff need to have more classroom management training, which is true because a lot of these folks, ACES and ASSETs staff, they are young people. And what is the connection between ELOP and our SCUST guiding principal? So first one is, we provide programming to our underserved, in our underserved communities. And COVID is gone, it's five years now. But we all know that there are lingering effects of COVID that our students, on the learning of our students. Now, ELOP funding, this is the most important part. So the rate from CD, the rate two, which Sac City is $1,579, roughly, this is the amount in our district. Our unduplicated rate in our elementary is 69.84%. And when you multiply these two number, allocation per student and number of unduplicated students, you get the number 20 million plus. And I have tried to be very precise, and, and once you multiply, you will get this number very close. And we need to provide services to all unduplicated students in elementary. ELOP amount, it has changed from year to year. Roughly, I can tell you, first year we got 10, then 25, 22, now 20. Don't know what the number will be next year. But when we did the budget, during our budget development, we kept this year's number in our mind. And that's how we put the budget for our 25, 26 school year. Salaries, YDSS staff, most of us are grant-funded, including myself. For summer, we kept 7 million. Sports, athletics, as I mentioned earlier, we transfer. Then UC certified PDM, we have 400-plus teachers, 3.5 million. Classified PDMs, field trips, we provide extensive opportunities to students during the school year to take them to different places. We have 175 students, they get paid through the district on PDM, 600,000. We pay for custodial supplies, instructional workshops, our CBO contracts. We kept 4 million, supplemental contracts, 2 million, indirect, and then total. Again, that's the rounded number when you total all these expenses, and I hope I did it right. New for 20, what is new for 25, 26 school year? Attendance recovery is new. So far, I have attended the meeting with the CDE webinar the day. We have met with our sister departments, three meetings, nothing is finalized yet. So once we finalize more detail about attendance recovery, then we will do an addendum and we will provide the update to the board. And basically, attendance recovery is, it has to be done under a certificated teacher. So students who are chronically absent, they can attend with certificated teacher supervision. And after 240 minutes, like roughly for elementary, then they can recover their attendance the day they missed. And schools can have their funding back for the missed days, which is a good deal. So, but we have to work on the details. Now, what is the next, what are the next steps? On May 16, tomorrow, we will put the plan on the website. We will send you the copy of the plan too and the link. And then we will be back on June 5th to seek the approval from the board. And it will be on the consent agenda, and I apologize for going over my 10 minutes. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Do we have any board discussion? Member Kayada?
So when you were talking about just how many providers we have, I guess I've always kind of been curious, how do we bring providers on? I mean, I know we've talked a little bit, or I've read emails you've sent. But how do we decide what providers to bring into our system? And how do we decide what provider is going to what school? How do, because schools change? How does that whole thing work? And what do we do to make sure that all providers that might be able to be available to a school or presented to a school if they're looking for someone? Let's say the one they have isn't working and they want to change.
So hopefully, I'm understanding your question correctly. ACES and 21st Century Grants, they have specific amount that is set for each site by CDE. So let's say site gets 180,000, ACES grant that goes to them, or the services. As far as ELOP funds are concerned, they come in one part and they all come to the central office. So we do contracts and serve stu, we open the application. We serve the students apply, and our intention is always to provide those services to all those services. We do not want to say no to unduplicated students. However, we usually don't say no to anybody whether they are unduplicated or not. Foster youth and homeless are a priority. And if I understand, you said which, how providers are selected, am I right? Yeah. So every principal has the right to ask if they are not happy with their current provider. Like currently, we are going through RFP at seven of our sites. Those principals sent us the email saying that, hey, we would like to see some change at my site for next year. We open the application, agencies apply, and then we send those applications to the principals. Principal have, they select a panel, parents, students, classified, certificated. We always say that have at least one from each segment, and then they interview. Sometime they go visit other sites too, they call other principals, referral check, and then they let us know which provider they would like to select. We are impartial, we let the principal and the panel handle it.
Okay, yeah, I guess I'm focused more on the providers than I am on the student access to the services. So with the LOP in particular, a lot of providers that previously weren't in our schools are interested in getting into this space. Like the Girl Scouts want to be an ELOP after-school provider now, right? I guess I just want to make sure that we have a process where we're adequately screening them to make sure that they will meet all the needs. So for example, I don't want to pick on anyone, so I'm not going to give a name. But let's say there's a certain provider that's heavily focused on, you know, "We're going to be a program that is really, really into basketball. And every kid who comes to this program is going to have an opportunity to become a great basketball player." How do we know that they don't, or that they are also making sure that the kids have time to do their homework? That they understand the educational components that go along with it and that they can integrate with the school?
So for main providers, we have two-step process. First, we apply, we ask all, open the application with the contracts office, our contracts office. They are the one who initiate the application. It's like an RFQ. Then agencies apply, we have their applications, we score them, we interview them. If they are in other districts, we make calls. And then with the help of the contracts office, we put those providers on our qualified, qualified providers list. And currently, there are only 14 providers who are on our qualified providers list. So that's main providers. Like some names I can say is Sacramento Chinese Community Service Center or Boys and Girls Club, YMCA. Now, there are supplemental providers like who provide music, dance, art. And I agree with you, ELOP money, a lot of people are like, I get so many calls saying that, "Oh, I can help you spend your ELOP funds." And I'm like, "No, I don't need your help to spend my ELOP funds." So for them, we have an application, we have an application. It's on the website. When somebody calls me that I would like to provide dance classes at your, in your district, I say, "Okay, here is the link, fill out the application, we will get back to you." So then we look at the application, we look at the capacity of the providers too. We have let go of providers when they did not fulfill what we, our expectations. And we have brought, we are bringing up new ones too. We check with other districts too, what's working in other districts, and we collaborate with them too. So we, we let go of providers. You asked me, how do we decide whether somebody is meeting or? For example, for supplemental providers, in their classes, we have to have a minimum number of 20 students. If they started with 20 and the number went down to 10 or 11, it means you are not engaging enough. So, so if you are engaging enough, students will come to you. So, so yes, time is like only three hours in after-school, basically. Some schools are out at two, so the program is four hours long. Most of our elementary, they are out at three. So, so we have three hours. Parents, number one thing is, I don't want to help my child with homework. When they come home, they need to finish, and that's a big struggle too. Even I had to discuss these things with principals too, like principals say, "Oh, my kids, my children, they love after-school program, they look towards it. However, I need to make sure that all kids finish homework." So it's a dilemma, and we try to have a balance. Hopefully, I answered your question. So we have processes there. So we have processes there, how we determine whom to keep and whom to let go of, and we do let go of every year when we are not happy. We have done that mid-year, where we have to say sorry. Or if somebody is not being responsible for the safety of the children, we recently, two months ago, we had to tell somebody, stop, you stop providing services, you are not keeping our kids safe.
Yeah, okay, that does answer it, and I think, yeah, you're capturing, well, what I'm thinking is, we want to have as many options and possibilities, and we want to bring new people in who can do new things for our kids, but we also want to make sure we're meeting the goals of these underlying funding sources and providing high-quality programs and homework. And I will say in defense of parents, that if you're using an after-school program, it's probably because you just worked a long day, and you want to get your kids to bed by 8:30, hopefully, so there's really not that much time left to really focus on homework, so.
You won't believe it, some students come to our sites at 7:30 and they are all the way till 6:00 in our programs.
That's my kids quite often. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Kaia. Member Rebo.
Thank you for this great presentation, Manpreet. I was really, on page 12, on slide 12, the feedback that you got, I can say has been feedback I have heard from students and families as well, lines very much. So as I'm reading this feedback, I know that you all are taking this into consideration as you prepare for the, for your next steps. I have a request to take into consideration, because I see classroom management, and I know that that's important. But I, I want to highlight a situation very specifically that happened one time when I went to pick up my kids from an after-school program, early, like before the release of time, right? And I arrived, and I remember that the person in charge of that class was a fairly young person, so right, right on with the comments that she made, right? But the person was trying to control the movement of the students, right? And I'm walking up to this class, and I'm seeing her frustrated and trying to get everybody in a straight line. But as a mom, I'm thinking, these kids have been following rules all day.
Yes.
So I hear the classroom management concern, but I also want the adults in the room to be mindful that these kids have been following rules all day. So by the time they get to after-school, this is where they want to release that energy. And although I agree, I am one of the parents that believes they do need to spend a little more time on homework, right? I also believe that these spaces are meant for our kids to be enriched.
Yes.
And we can't do that if we're over-focused on trying to manage behavior and movement. So I just ask that you take those into consideration as you put the plan together, and I trust that you all probably already will, but just, that's just my only feedback.
Do you know how, how happy I am to saying that and pointing out that? Because I, as I mentioned earlier, I had so many discussions even with principals and everybody at the site, that expanded learning programs, all these programs, they are meant for kids to release their energy, jump, run, this is what these, be created, and these programs are meant for that. And however, we try to keep the wishes of the parents too, who wants to, homework to be done, making sure all rules are followed, whatever school rules are, so we try to do our best. But I agree with you, this is a time when you want to go crazy and wild, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Ralston.
Hello.
10.4. Update to Delta Shores Development.
Good evening, President Singh, Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent, I think we're at chief marking, and members of the board. Tonight, I will be providing an update to the Delta Shores development and impacts on Sacramento City Unified. You will hear tonight that we are using equity as a guide in our long-term planning, and will be part of any recommendations we provide to the board in the future. Tonight, I will share with you the current enrollment we are receiving from the development through March 15th, share a known timeline of future progress on the development, allow for public comment, and answer any questions to the best of my ability. This is a pretty map of the development as proposed to the city in 2009. To date, the developers have held true to the development layout, just not the timeline. The red outlines are lots we have rights to purchase. The south lot, south of Consumus River Boulevard, is available to us to purchase two years after the last development is complete. It will be valued at the property value of the time of the agreement, about 2018. The red outline north of Consumus River Boulevard is the property we have rights to if we choose. We have three years from the final development of homes for the value of the land as it was in 2009. The board approved that agreement in 2024. The red Xs are our students. Some homes may have more than one student. In total, there are 18 students in the development attending our schools. Here is a breakout for you. First grader at Phoebe Hurst, Bowling Green Chacon, and Caleb Greenwood. Third grader at John Still. Fourth grader at Bowling Green Chacon, Caesar Chavez, and John Still. Sixth grader at Mataya Ma. Seventh grader at John Still and School of Engineering and Science. Eighth grader at SES. Ninth grader at SES. And four students at Luther Burbank High School. A quick recent drive personally through the neighborhood show homes built, but not occupied as well. I did stop into the sales office, and they confirmed, they let families know that John Still and Luther Burbank are the schools for the area. However, one sales office said that a new school will be built soon, and I didn't get into the conversation, it was just a quick research project. Disclosure, we do not have plans at this time for school. On the south side of Consumus River Boulevard, the next big development is the apartment complex. It is slated to begin at the later this year. It will have 232 units in Phase 1, mostly one-bedroom apartments. To the north of the Boulevard, grading has begun on that housing development. The grading and main underground infrastructure is slated to not be done until after the end of 2026. Homes will begin after that time period. A connection to Manners Side Drive by John Still and 24th Street Extension are expected to be part of this phase. This will provide direct access for students and families to get to John Still without getting on the freeway. Also recently approved by the city is the beginning of Phase 4, which includes the large lot map. This breaks the area into smaller parcels, in this case, three. Three parcels on the southwest corner of 24th Street and Consumus River Boulevard show 15 acres of homes at 15 units per acre and an 11-acre community park. This is the rendering and layout of the new apartment complex, east across from the shopping center and our favorite Chick-fil-A. Before we begin, public comment, staff recommendation is to hold our position and continue monitoring enrollment growth and development progress. If the street connection is made to Manners Side Drive, it would be staff's recommendation to use developer fee money to update the space at John Still and ready for incoming students. This will allow us to use excess capacity we already own and not need to build more for low-enrolled schools in close proximity. The land north of Consumus River Boulevard that we have rights to for a school would be in viewing distance of two of our schools. That would just be too close. 1,400 feet to John Still, 4,000 feet to Susan B. Anthony.
Thank you. Brian, do you have any public comment?
We do not.
Awesome. Board questions, comments, discussion? Okay. Member Kaia, sorry.
So I just wanted to thank you for bringing this back and providing that update. That was my experience also with the kind of sales push, is that there will be a school coming. And obviously, people who want to sell things are going to sell things. I think, you know, I just want to make sure we keep an eye on this, so I guess I'm not really saying much at this point, but I think it's just really important to remember that we have not identified funding to build new schools here, and.
The developer fee fund is not large enough to handle a new school, but to answer your other point, Nathaniel and I have recurring scheduled appointments with the developers. They come into our office, they keep us updated, and they've offered to also say, families moved in, they had two kids this age. So we can track it unofficially without names and numbers, but the dots you have come from our student information system.
Thank you. Perfect, that's an informational item, so we'll move on to 10.5, which is to approve Resolution 3493 on surplus 2401 Florin, and this is an action item. Member, Mr. Browning.
Good evening. President Singh, Superintendent Allen, members of the board. I'm Nathaniel Browning, the Director of Facilities Planning and Property Management. I am here tonight to seek your approval to surplus 2401 Florin Road, also known as Florin Tech. I am not here to talk about whether we should sell or lease the facility, I am only here to outline why the property should be declared surplus, since it no longer serves an educational purpose to the district, which I'll get into more in the coming slides. First, as always, I want to provide a reminder that the district's core value and guiding principle, powerful statements, are the foundations on which the facilities department builds So the Florin property was originally built as a Hyundai car dealership in the 1980s. The district purchased the dealership in 20, in 2003 for an adult education program, which operated until 2010. The facility is not Field Act compliant, therefore, it cannot house K-12 students. Since 2010, it housed a couple different unsuccessful adult charter programs, district storage, and a few small district operations from time to time. The site has attracted a notable amount of undesired attention over the years, resulting in barbed wire fencing along the back perimeter and no-climb fencing along Florin Road. Surrounding businesses and neighbors would likely categorize this property as an eyesore, and we have fielded a number of complaints and calls to that end. Currently, the site is used for district storage that could be relocated elsewhere. SACRT, which is located next door, currently leases 41 parking stalls near the front of the building for overflow parking. This is an underutilized site. The district operated the Florin Road facility at a deficit of $319,976 during the 23, 24 school year. These dollars come straight from the general fund. So today, we're recommending to board surplus of property located at 2401 Florin Road. As we shared in March, we currently convened a 7-Eleven committee to advise the board on, quote, "policies and procedures governing the use or deposition of school buildings or spaces on school grounds which no longer are needed for school purposes," end quote. That is outlined by Education Code Section 17388. And the district's legal interpretation of that phase is, of the phrase "school purposes" refers to the use of property for district schools, not for other uses by third parties. A no vote means this conversation is over and the property remains as is today. A yes vote means the district is still able to lease the site, sell it, trade it, keep it as is, or other possible options we can explore in the future. A yes vote opens the door for additional considerations that Mr. Ralston hopes to dive into with you all later tonight for 10, item 10.9. With that, any questions?
Brian, do you have any public comment?
We do have two speakers on 10.5. We have William McDaniel's, followed by Kelly Keyes.
Hello, Councilor, I'm William McDaniel's, and this is Shawna McDaniel's, my sisters. And so really, we're here this evening to really inquire about the space, and after inquiry, to see what we need to do to acquire the space. And I just went to, a couple weeks ago, in Oak Park Urban and Development Planning. So we, we would like to, here in the near future, show you what we would like to do with this space in the presentation, because I know as an existing building, that's important. And I found out underground parking is not a thing that you guys really like. I think when I was there a couple weeks ago, you passed by, but I really like how important it is, Oak Park is really doing things in that community. And so here in South Sacramento, we're trying to bring that same energy on Florin Road. And Shawna McDaniel's will speak to that about the things that she's brought to South Sacramento, why it's important that if we acquire that building, the things that we can do and generate revenue with that building.
Thank you, William. Yes, we just want to mention the work that Sedona Truth African Heritage Museum has been doing in Sacramento, specifically the South Sacramento area community for well over 30 years. We've been a staple right there at the corner of 24th and Florin, inside what is known as the Florin Square Plaza. We've invested so much work in beautifying our community, murals down Florin Road, murals at Food Max, Quality Tune Up, the Light Rail. We are responsible for the utility boxes being painted down Florin Road and Mac Road. We are responsible for the current people chairs that you now see down Florin Road at different businesses, Food Max, Light Rail, Quality Tune Up. We are responsible for street banners down Florin Road. So we've invested over, as I mentioned, over 30 years, starting with G Parkway, which is now Phoenix Park. We initially started our work by painting over five murals at that location. And we started working with the schools in our district, Burbank, Rosa Parks, other schools, elementary schools in our neighborhood, bringing art to our community. So yes, we want to be able to present a proposal, as William mentioned, to be able to acquire that space. When Larry Carr was the council member, he worked with us for 15 years to acquire that particular space, but it just didn't materialize. But now that this space is becoming public, we want to be at the table and have a conversation with all of you. We feel it's important for us to be able to carry on this very important work, and I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. How's everybody doing tonight? Everybody look like they tired or. Well, they, they done laid it all out. But Ms. McDaniel's has done a lot of work in Sacramento communities for over 30 years. We go back to when people were scared to drive down Florin Road, because they were scared that they was going to get shot between Franklin and Florin down the Freeport, where they was doing 65 miles an hour like they was at Sacramento Sp-, what is it? Raceway. Yeah, yeah, that's what it is. But that changed because her and a lot of the people that lost people and friends and people in the community got out and talked to the kids and got the kids and see a different light. Far as, a lot of them were into music, a lot of them were into artwork, and the, the other thing is history, they learned about their history. And that changed, when you see a light of, I can look over there at you, and I'm talking to you about your history, and your eyes light up, you know you done put your work in. And they smile just like you just smiled just now. That's what it's about. It's about the kids of the future. And Ms. McDaniel's, with her being over 2401 Florin Road, it expands to do what she's doing, but in a larger scale. And I believe truly that, in far as, in the far as. And I believe truly that in far as, in the far as the future coming up, the people behind us, because we all gonna get old, we gonna die off, but there's gonna be things that's gonna be happening for the kids of the future. And that's what it's about. So I'm gonna stop talking. I thank you folks for your time, and I hope you see what we see. To keep the kids going where they need to go, you gotta have something for them, the flow. Thank you.
Thank you.
No questions?
All right, does the board have any questions for Mr. Browning? All right, if not, I'll look for a motion to surplus 2401 Florin, if that's where we're headed. Mr. Benjamin, you have a question or you have a motion? Is that accidental or purposeful motion? Okay. All right, we have a motion for Mr. Benjamin. I have a second for Mr. Rhodes. We will start with our student preferential vote.
Aye.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Benjamin?
Aye.
Member Navarro?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Ibarra?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to our next piece is 10 point... 10.6. This is 3494 to surplus CP Huntington Elementary.
President Singh, Superintendent Allen, board members, I feel really fortunate to sit here in front of you again tonight. Thank you for that. We want to discuss and recommend the approval of resolution 3494 for the surplus of CP Huntington Elementary. Again, here's the district's core value and guiding principle, steeped in equity. Overview of the property. CP Huntington Site was originally built in 1958 and closed as a school in 2013. The property is largely used for district file storage with a couple portable classrooms to the north of the property, about where that red marker is. And those are being leased to set up for Head Start programs. It is an attractive nuisance that results in everything from abandoned boats being left in the parking lot, hazardous encampments being found in enclaves on the roof, and individuals repeatedly breaking into the facility. The neighborhood views this property as an eyesore, and personally, I find walking this facility to be slightly haunting, and that says a lot. It's notably underutilized, and the current district's storage could be filed elsewhere. The previous CP Huntington Boundary attendance was divided up and shaded as shown with Hollywood Park to the north. And the purple shading is now where students go to Harkness. As you see here, there are a total of 69 households within the previous CP Huntington Boundary that would have otherwise attended the school. However, there is plenty of capacity at the neighboring sites to receive students generated from this area. Harkness Elementary has about 249 students attending the site now and is only at 65% capacity and able to receive more students. Hollywood Park has about 264 students attending the site now and is at 75% capacity, obviously able to also receive more students. This site is no longer needed for educating students. Furthermore, the district operated this site at a deficit of $393,505 during the last academic school year. And again, that's a lot of money coming from the general fund. So, we recommend the board surplus CP Huntington Elementary, which has not operated as a school for over a decade. The basis of this recommendation is that it is no longer needed to serve educational purposes for the district. Again, a no vote means that this conversation is over and we keep it as is. And a yes vote means we're still able to potentially lease, sell, trade, leave it as is, or other possible options for the site that we can explore. Furthermore, Mr. Ralston would love to talk to you further about this property in item 10.9 today.
Thank you. Brian, public comment?
We have none.
All right, thank you. Any questions from our board members for Mr. Browning? Member Kayata, go ahead.
So if we order surplus, are we required to take action by any sort of deadline? Does the surplus kind of go away? Or is it remain surplus indefinitely until we decide to do something?
It can remain at surplus indefinitely.
Thank you. And I guess I'll move it if no one else is in queue.
All right, I don't see any comments, so moved by Member Kayata, seconded by Member Ibarra. Let's go to a student preferential vote, and then roll call.
Aye.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Benjamin?
Aye.
Member Navarro?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Ibarra?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Moving on, 10.7. Mr. Browning again.
It's true, it's me again. All right, so this time, I'm asking to seek your approval on resolution 3495 to surplus Fruit Ridge Elementary. So the Fruit Ridge Site was originally built in 1937 and closes as a school as well in 2013. The property is entirely leased by three organizations that include Fruit Ridge Community Collaborative, Oak Ridge, sorry, River Oak Center for Children, and A Different Path. The site has been leased at a loss to the district financially since 2015. It has been with the district for nearly then... I've been with the district for nearly the entire time that it's been leased, and it has been faced with a lot of issues since its inception. I've actually taken on those issues in my previous role before facilities, and now in facilities. That has been everything from mediating concerns around who's buying toilet paper and who's using too much toilet paper, to issues around tenants going months and months and months without paying lease, and everything you can imagine in between. The property has tenants now and has current leases in place and everything. All the dues are being paid, but it continues to draw substantial amount from the district's coffers. The previous Fruit Ridge Boundary, the north part, now attends Father Keith B. Kenny Elementary. And the southern shaded area is now Oak Ridge Elementary. As you see here, there's a total of 147 households within the previous Fruit Ridge Boundary that would have otherwise attended this site. Father Keith B. Kenny Elementary has about 250 students attending the site now and is only at 41% capacity and able to enroll much, much more. Oak Ridge has about 432 students attending the site, and the capacity of the new building that's about to open will be at 66% capacity, still room for more. Again, the district has operated the Fruit Ridge Elementary Site at a deficit of $450,000 plus last academic school year. Even after, this number is even after accounting for the potential revenue we could have earned from that site based on the lease agreements that we've entered into now at this point. This is a lot of dollars coming directly from our general fund. So again, today, we recommend the board surplus Fruit Ridge Elementary, which has not operated as a school since 2013. The basis of this recommendation is that it is no longer serves as an educational purpose for the district, as outlined in the previous presentations this evening. This is to say that it is no longer needed for district programming regardless of third-party tenants. A no vote means this conversation again is over. A yes vote, however, means the district is still able to lease the site, sell the site, leave it as is, or other possible options that we can explore. And again, Mr. Ralston is super excited to talk to you about this property in 10.9 if you wish. Any questions?
Brian, do you have any public comment?
We do not.
Member Ibarra?
Thank you, Nathaniel, for that. I just have a quick question, because in, on slide four, you mentioned 61 households now currently attend Father Keith B. Kenny and 86 households now currently attend Oak Ridge. Is there an approximate number of how many students not in household form are being served between the two schools?
So what I have is there's 147 households. I don't know how many students that is off the top of my head. But either way, there is a lot of capacity between those two neighborhood schools to receive all of those students plus any population growth that we might see in that area.
And I agree with that. But my concerns are more around, and this is, and I recognize that this is not the place for the conversation, so I'm just gonna make the comment and leave it at that. My concern still remains around those families and how they're able to get to school. And it's important to me, because you highlighted it in the last presentation where we talked about the schools. And so, and I also think about ADA. And we're expecting our kids to be at school every day, but we're not getting them there. So this isn't directed towards you, Nathaniel, but for us as a board, to really think about as we move forward with these decisions, how we are still supporting the families that we are still obliged to serve.
Thank you, Member Ibarra. Member Benjamin?
Yeah, so I had the opportunity to sit in the 7-Eleven committee meetings. And I've worked really, really close with Fruit Ridge Community Collaborative, as you know. And I struggle with the school purpose phrase, right? Because although it's not, it won't be open as a traditional school, it serves the Sacramento City Unified School District students in that area. And it stands as a safe space. During COVID, that was the place where the kids in the community went to get the services that they couldn't get at schools that were closed down. And so, in understanding the surplus process, it's just hard. I feel like, you know, we have to be careful when we look at repurposing these things, right? I don't want to feel like I'm putting, you know, profit over people. And so, I just feel like that, you know, we really need to take a look as a school district and as a board at the qualitative data over the quantitative data. We see all the numbers and things of that nature, but what the community is getting out of that space is invaluable. It's the space that, it saved a lot of lives, it's fed a lot of people. And so, I think we just need to really, really examine this. It's more of a comment than anything. But, so it's really hard for me to, you know, surplus it knowing that it quite possibly won't stay in the same space that it's in now, which is in the help service to the community and the students, Sacramento City Unified School District students in that area. So I just want to say that. This is a comment I wanted to make for consideration for the board.
Thank you, Member Benjamin. I'll hit this button for myself. I will just want to comment on that, which is we, as a board, hold tremendous power over properties that are ours that have served our district and continue to serve our district. Maybe not in the ways that we'd like to see, but at this much anticipated 10.9 conversation, I hope that we can ask those questions of Mr. Ralston. But my understanding is in order to get to that question and have those discussions around how to use this property, the only way to get there is move forward with the vote here, right? So with that, I want a motion, and I'll look for a second. Thank you, Member Jean. Student preferential vote?
Aye.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Benjamin?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Ibarra?
Aye.
All right, thank you so much, and... Member Navarro?
Aye.
She didn't say.
We're gonna see you on Tuesday when we catch posted.
All right, 10.8. Member Browning?
Hello?
Mr. Browning, sorry.
Yes.
You could be a member.
No, thanks. I'll leave that to you guys. All right, so here we are, talking about the last item I have in front of you this evening, the approval of resolution 3496 to surplus Maple Elementary. Okay, so the Maple Site was originally built in 1952 and closed as a school as well in 2013. The property is entirely leased by La Familia Counseling Center since 2015. The tenants have been really good tenants, but we still operate the site as a deficit, which I'll talk to here momentarily. La Familia has shown interest in the past for purchasing the facility or having those conversations, but we have yet to explore their interest currently. If the board provides the direction during Mr. Ralston's presentation after this one, we would love to look into that a little bit more deeply. A representative from the organization also attended the September 16th, 2024 7-Eleven Committee Meeting to advocate for this property to be surplus. Here's a map of the old Maple Elementary Attendance Boundary before it closed. It is now part of Ethel Phillips Elementary. As you see here, there are a total of 49 households within the previous Maple Boundary that would have otherwise attended the site. Ethel Phillips Elementary has currently 242 students attending the site now and is at 56% capacity and able to enroll more. Again, if you notice here, the work orders compared to the other presentations are much less. It's because the current tenant does take on a little bit more responsibility. The tenant has also paid every due owed to the district since they moved in in August 2015. However, we're still operating this facility at a deficit of $151,390, coming straight from the general fund. And you know the spiel on, I went too fast, you know the spiel here? We believe that this no longer has an educational purpose, although there may be other purposes that it would be good for, that could be discussed as a surplus property. Again, surplus property doesn't mean anything other than we can potentially sell it, we can potentially lease it, we can leave it as is, we can explore other options, we could even trade it. So no vote means this conversation is over and we remain status quo. And a yes vote means the district is able to explore options with Mr. Ralston right after I'm done here.
Thank you.
We do have a comment on this quite a bit. We have about 17 cards at last check.
Okay.
Do you want to go one minute?
So I'll just announce it. So folks, we have 15 minutes, but I understand everyone would like to get a word, and so we will extend it to that full 17 minutes, but it'll be a minute per person. So please, you know, I'm very lenient on the cutoff piece, but I just hope that you can respect our time and all of our time. So please limit it to a minute, and let's get started.
Okay, first speaker Juan Iglesias, followed by Megan Benitez, and then Steve Cottle.
Good evening. My name is Juan Iglesias. Hello to the board and to Superintendent. I am the President of United Latinos. We are a nonprofit organization based in South Sacramento. Joining me today are two of my fellow board members, Vice President Arturo Alemán, our Treasurer Christina Mora, and our Executive Director, Dr. Manuel Guillot. I don't want to take too much of your time. I had a little more to express, but I just wanted to urge you to consider leasing the property, either to Sacramento City or to La Familia, who's been a good steward of the property since 2015. I need to tell you, La Familia is a very well-respected institution, not only in South Sacramento, but entire city of Sacramento. not only in South Sacramento, but entire city of Sacramento. It's a jewel for the city of Sacramento. Since they've taken over, uh, the Maple Center, they have done a wonderful job providing a ton of activities and innovative programs for the young people, for the adults, and for senior citizens. Uh, I hope you take serious her, uh, the request from La Familia to grant them the lease for one dollar a year, as you have done with, uh, other, uh, school sites. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Megan Benitez, followed by Steve Cottle.
Hi, everyone, my name is Megan Benitez. I'm a director for Calidadza, which is a nonprofit based out of Sacramento. We are a traditional Mexican folklorico dance company. We're actually one of your, um, supplemental providers for SUSD. This is the facility at the Maple Center. Through La Familia, we are able to train all of our dancers and our instructors there. If it goes to anybody else, we will not be able to afford any other type of rent or purchasing place at market value. We service also, uh, Calidadza Dance Academy at Maple Center, which services over sixty families. Um, we have our after-school programs, as I said, and we also work with SCOE to do our school assemblies. And all of this is with the ability from La Familia at the Maple Center. They have been our huge help. Without it, we do not have a site in Sacramento. So I hope that you guys help to La Familia. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Steve, and I'm with, um, Sacramento Adventure Playground. We're currently at the Maple Site. We are part of Fairy Tale Town. We've been operating there since, uh, two thousand and sixteen. Uh, adventure playgrounds are common in numerous other countries, but rare in the United States. Uh, we're about play, uh, out-of-school play, that's what we do. And it makes much better adults for, for the kids. Everyone can pretty much understand the social and the physical aspects of play, but I'm here to tell you, and this is important to you, education is probably the number one thing about what we do, right? Um, it, it, it's easy to understand the other points, but you know, it's so vital. Uh, I can point to you that a major rocket company will only want to employ scientists and engineers who play as children. There's a reason why that happens, and I would love to show you to you, I would love to have you come down here. We fully support this because we have seen children's lives changed, and we want to continue this, and we believe we can continue this as a surplus facility, uh, and with La Familia taking control. Thank you.
Next group of speakers, we have Kevin Smith Fagan, followed by Philip Norton, and then Rachel Rios.
Hi, good evening, my name is Kevin Smith Fagan. I serve as executive director of Fairy Tale Town. We operate the program Steve just described, Sacramento Adventure Playground at La Familia. And I would like to encourage the board to follow the recommendation of the seven-eleven committee and cert, and get it in, get the property into the hands of La Familia. If you surplus it out to the general market, we don't know what we're going to get, but we do know what we're going to lose. La Familia is the community anchor in that area. It is the soul of those neighborhoods, and I can tell you, trust is very hard to come by in those neighborhoods. La Familia has earned it by doing a great job for a decade now. So either get it straight to them or maybe cede it to the city, who could then do, uh, token amount lease to La Familia, which in fact is how Fairy Tale Town relates to the city of Sacramento. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Philip Norton. I'm chief of staff to Mayor Protem Eric Gara at the city of Sacramento, and I'm here on his behalf. Uh, I'm here to support whatever solution that ensures La Familia continues operating Maple Neighborhood Center at Maple Elementary. This center is a deeply impactful community asset that provides many opportunities for our youth and families. We have to do everything we can to ensure organizations like La Familia remain in our community. Thank you.
Good evening, President Singh and Board trustees and Superintendent. Um, my name is Rachel Rios, I'm the executive director of La Familia Counseling Center, and we are concerned with the recommendation as stated only in that surplusing the property does not guarantee that La Familia will be the person or the organization that will, um, be operating, uh, the Maple Center. For the last ten years, we have operated the Maple Center. We have invested with our partners over two million dollars in improvements as well as rent. I do have a little bit of an issue with the presentation about the hundred and fifty thousand deficit because at the September seven-eleven committee, the district presented that the cost was a hundred and fifty-three thousand and that we were paying a hundred and fifty-three thousand. So it's a cost neutral that has been to the district. Um, so again, we want to continue operating at the Maple Center. We think that there has been precedents before where the school district has leased it to the city and the city has leased it back for a dollar a year. We've paid, again, almost two million dollars. Other properties have paid fifteen dollars for fifteen years. We would say that if you do surplus it, we ask that you direct the staff to specifically work with La Familia to continue to operate the facility as, um, a neighborhood center. And then I just want to say that for the record, there are over eight hundred comments that have been submitted from people supporting it, and we have, I don't know where our staff is, a stack of other comments that we have to be able to present to you as well, that people have presented.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration. This is our board chair.
Hi, I'm, I am La Familia's board chair, Rick Bransma. Uh, just want to reiterate, uh, the resolution is before you, uh, jeopardizes, uh, La Familia's future at Maple if you adopt it in its current form. The seven-eleven commission recommended surplusing, but that you consider selling, giving La Familia control of that site. The resolution before you implements the first part of that recommendation, but it leaves La Familia's future at Maple dependent on a process that offers no guarantees. We'd ultimately be chosen through lease or purchase agreements to continue our programming there. So instead, we ask you to direct the staff to work with La Familia and a solution that allows us to continue operating Maple and for the long term and eliminates your costs. Thank you.
Next group of speakers, we have Richard Bransma, followed by, that was you, okay. People go out of order. Uh, we have Mohamed Albutershi, okay, followed by Zana Bates, and then Deborah Hernandez.
How you doing? Cool. My name is Mohamed Albutershi, and I work with La Familia. Maple is a place where kids dream, families heal, and hope lives. Maple is not just a building, it's a lifeline. Since two thousand and fifteen, La Familia has built more than a service. We have built a community, a place of safety, support, and a sec, a, a, a place for safety, support, and we always believe in a chance. We are asking for you to sell La Famil, uh, we are asking for you to sell it to La Familia. So we, we are able to continue to give our community a chance to prove themselves. I want to leave you with doctor, I want to leave you with a quote by Martin Luther King, who says, "The time is always right to do what's right." We're not just supporting the community, we are planting seeds, seed of strength, seed of courage, and seed of better tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Zana Niro Bates, and I'm here tonight to express my strong support for the approval of the resolution and for you all to work with La Familia so that they may continue to lease the space at Maple. I'm a proud Sacramento community member, as well as a volunteer of Calidadza and a longtime supporter of La Familia. Um, both organizations provide essential services and programs that enrich our community, and both would be significantly impacted by the potential loss of the Maple Center. Uh, this issue is deeply personal to me because I was a previous recipient of La Familia's mental health services when I was a youth. And, um, because of their dedication and their compassionate clinicians and staff, I was able to make a full turnaround and now live a very successful life as an adult and a mental health professional myself. La Familia continues to be a lifeline for children and families, and I please urge you to, um, work with them so that they may continue to lease. Thank you.
You can, you can lower it, there's a, there's a button to lower the podium.
There's a button?
Yes. Nathaniel's very tall.
Oh, fancy, thank you.
Hello, everyone, my name is Devora. I am a community member that has used and recommended La Familia services that they have provided at, at Maple Elementary, and I also take folklorico classes, um, there with Calidadza. I have witnessed the wonderful environment they provide at Maple Elementary that has encouraged people to still show up even during a time where many would hide. I ask the board that if you choose to sell this location, to please sell or lease it to La Familia Counseling so they can continue to provide the resources and services and space for a community that is highly needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next group of speakers, we have Carolina Guerra, followed by Diana Reyes, and then it just says Carmen, no last name.
My name is Carolina Guerra, and then I'm the new kid on the block on the Maples Community Center. I'm sixty-two, believe it or not. It's not funny, but, um, what I like to say is my older kids, since I retired, they've been able to pay programs for me as I yoga or swimming, I be in other communities, and then I wasn't unable to find what I'm looking for. So for a period of time, I've been at home all day long for many weeks. And then one day I opened the, um, um, the app, um, what, what is the name of the app? That's an app, and it says about the, um, I'm sixty-two. What this says about the Maple Community Center, and then I, um, want to enjoy it. And the, the very first day, I was very comfortable. Today, I told my youngest daughter that I got to come to this meeting, and she says, "Why?" I said, "Because they want to close the program," and she goes, "Oh, no." So the emotion that I feel, that finally they see their mom doing something for her life other than be at home, the program enjoys me. It makes me fulfill my age because I'm doing things with my peers. And then I do know that at this age, all that pain is related to my age. It's not book to read how to be an owl. It's just every day, um, living into your body with the other people. What I like to say is like, um, before I get into this program, I feel like a flower in a, in a cup, in a glass, but at that glass, it has no water. And this program, it helps me to drop by drop, filling it. I feel myself being able to take a shower and get out and start in a part of the community, that it makes me feel alive. So I've been three months in, in the, in the program. I don't want to escape any Wednesday, any Thursday. And then for me, it's a bliss. I really want you to know that, uh, people like me need programs like this. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Carmen Howard-Guiz. I'm one of the members of the family. Very happy to be there. I'm eighty-two years old, my husband is ninety, and I don't think we can, we can be out of this program. We have everything there. A lot of, a lot of friends, we do a lot of art, we dance, we sing. It's beautiful, it's beautiful, beautiful. It's very important for the community. Please don't take it away from us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Carmen. That was you. Okay, where's, okay. Katie Maple, followed by Irene Mariana Sanchez, and then Daniel Reyes.
Hello, my name is Diana. I have been at, I have been at La Familia for a little over six years now. La Familia has been a safe place for children, youth, and adults. La Familia is a home for everyone and a place for opportunity for all. Being a youth member at La Familia makes this matter personal to me, as I've considered it a second home for me for more than five years, and many others do so as well. Thank you.
All right, good evening, President Singh and members. My name is Katie Maple, uh, no relation to the Maple Neighborhood Center, um, other than I really like it. Um, I am the city council member representing District Five, and actually, all of the properties that you've talked about today, with the exception of the Fruit Ridge Collaborative, which is just in the county outside of, but serves the neighborhoods that I represent, are, have, are in District Five. And so, um, it's been, it's been, I really enjoyed the conversations, and I support the decisions that you've made. I know that we all have to make really tough decisions all the time in this, in this work, and I really want to thank you for your service and for being here late at night, and hopefully I'm not the last person moving you and going home. Uh, but I couldn't miss the opportunity to be here, um, because what La Familia does and the, all the organizations at the Maple Neighborhood Center are so crucial to that neighborhood and the surrounding community. South City Farms is a neighborhood that unfortunately lacks it a lot. They don't have a community center, they don't have a park, they don't have safe streets, they don't have tree canopy. Um, and they start, these are a lot of working-class community members who really deserve to have those things, and we're going to fight for them. This is their community center. This is their area that they go. This is the place where young people are able to access the services that they need. I know I'm a little over time, but I'll be brief. I noticed that your items before this were expanded learning. Expanded learning recognizes that students don't just learn in the classroom, right? We, we, we invest in expanded learning because we recognize that students learn all over the place. They learn after school, before school, summer school, and that's really important to their growth. And so I would say without a doubt that La Familia and the Maple Neighborhood Service absolutely serves a purpose for these students, an educational purpose, and I hope that you do view it that way. My ask is, um, that we take a pause because the city staff currently are in negotiations and talking with La Familia. I think there is a possibility of the city being able to enter into an agreement of some sort to take this on, but we're just not there right now. So that's my hope, is that we can maybe take a pause for now, revisit, revisit this in the future as we negotiate with La Familia and then hopefully with the Sacramento City Unified School District. Thank you.
My name is Irene, and I am a dancer with Calidadza Company Academy. I am also a community member that has attended the wonderful events La Familia has hosted at this location. I show up bi-weekly, and while walking to dance class, I see rooms full of community members taking classes at night to better their lives. People talking to each other and unwinding in what I imagine is a long day of hard work. Seeing little kids playing at the playground, running around and playing in happiness. Disrupting this community and forcing La Familia to look for another space to hold vital services they provide for, provide for the community may disrupt this environment and discourage people from further receiving these resources. Please choose to sell or continue to lease the Maple Elementary to La Familia so they can continue providing vital resources and bringing together a wonderful community during these difficult times. Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel Reyes?
Hello, my name is Daniel. Um, I've been a youth member of La Familia since twenty nineteen. La Familia is a great space for children, youth, adults. There's many different programs that are offered with La Familia, and being a member for this long, it, it make, it makes La Familia like a second home to me as well, um, as well as my sister and, um, many adults, uh, as they, there are two classrooms for Highlands Community Charter Schools, uh, which my mother was a graduate of in class of twenty twenty-three. was a graduate of, in class of 2023. There are many different programs that help youth, help adults, help children, and a lot of people in need. And, I'm sorry. It's really personal to me because of how many people actually need this, and if you were to have to sell it, I would like it to have been sold to La Familia Counseling. Thank you.
That's all.
All right, questions, comments from our board for Mr. Browning and Mr. Ralston. Member G.
So just to clarify, can you remind us what when we declare surplus, it means we're doing with the property?
Yeah, so if the property is declared surplus, it is no longer categorized as a school essentially. So we, as a district, are able to do nothing with it after it's declared surplus, lease it in a number of different ways that we're not able to necessarily do with underneath ed code as it's categorized as under a school. So it opens up lease options. We can potentially trade it. We can potentially sell it. Another component with surplusing it means it's no longer a school, right? So we don't necessarily have to be beholden to DSA requirements for a lot of those components and things that I've heard La Familia wanting to do with the property as well. Some of the things, if that site ever is to be modernized or alternated, altered in any way, it will have to go through DSA because we have to maintain that school designation on it.
So currently, they've been leasing it, but we're still holding it in reserve as potential school, potential educational purposes. What we've done now with the 7-Eleven Committee is confirm that at the current time and in the future, it is not needed for school purposes, so we can lease it to be able to open it up to some of the hopes and dreams that we're hearing from our community right now for this space.
Yep, that's possible.
Possible, because we have to do this first step before we can then have the conversations about the other pieces.
That's correct.
Great. Thank you.
Member Navarro.
So obviously, I'm in favor of us have, of this property being in control of nonprofit, and the current nonprofit there has been wonderful, right? So I guess my concern in the language is, in the language of the resolution, there's talks about, like a real estate consultant having a say. We can't give direction now. We would have to wait for 10.9 to give direction. And is that because it's still a school property?
It's because it is still a school property. So if you say we know, we want to maintain and not surplus it, the conversation's over. No conversation about Maple Elementary at all. Now, if you do surplus it and you want to sit on it and think about it, that's an option too. The resolution before you is stating that we want to declare a surplus, but we also know that it's exempt from the government code of Surplus Land Act, and that therefore we would follow education code with that.
Okay, and the second option that was talked about, about leasing to the city, I got another app ready for it, would that have cost on us as well? Or?
It depends on what the lease would look like, right?
Yeah, I just want to clarify two things, because I know you're thinking about it. How about that? If you do nothing, you're telling staff that it could possibly be a school, and we will continue doing short-term, six-month, or one-year leases. And that will handcuff any future that you heard about tonight. If you surplus it, every door is open, any conversation can happen. I won't have a conversation with the city if you vote no tonight, because you're telling me it could be a school. That's something you need to be thinking about. Tell us that you like what you heard today in public comment, or don't, but I can't have those conversations at your direction if you vote no, because you're then telling us we believe it will be a school one day, and we need to hold on to the rights of that property in short term, because we would have to open it in a quick turnaround. So those are things to be thinking about when you say no.
I guess my concern is there's no guarantee, but let's say, say I want to lease it or sell it to La Familia. What would you recommend that I vote today?
Yes.
Yes.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Member Kayada. I don't want to get into 10.9, so I'll try to keep it really brief, but I will just say, I'm planning on voting yes for this, and that yes is because I 100% want to get this into La Familia's hands by whatever means we talk about in 10.9. There's concern about, you know, the timeline to do so. If we act on this now, are we moving the can down the road? No, we can take as long as we want. If they want to work with the city, we can wait for the city to get on board. For me, actually, I forget whose comment it was, but talking about what guarantees do we have that this could be made available? And in my mind, if we vote no, that's less of a guarantee, because it could be a school one day, it could be anything else. The true guarantee is getting it into La Familia's hands, not on a six-month to one-year basis, but on a much longer-term basis. And that's, I think, as far as I can go without getting into 10.9, but that's what my yes is for. Someone made a comment that there's consideration of getting it to La Familia? Definitely no. That is not on the table today. I'll just, I feel like I'm speaking for everyone, but that's not on the table, no matter what we do.
Member Benjamin.
So, and thank you again, gentlemen, for your presentation. So just to be clear, the 7-Eleven Committee's recommendation is to, if we decide to surplus that La Familia would get first right of refusal, correct? That, the recommendation is what I'm saying.
We can't do that yet.
Technically speaking, the 7-Eleven Committee had interest in declaring a surplus, and then they stated they would like to see it go to La Familia. However, that is non-binding to the board, and that doesn't necessarily keep into consideration all the legal requirements we have upon us as a district.
Okay. I'm just speaking in terms of conversation, that's what the conversation was. Okay, thank you.
Member Navarro.
I don't want to get too into the weeds, because I know we're going to get there. I know we get to 10.9, but this is what I am going to say. I'm going to echo a lot of what we heard this evening. La Familia is a cornerstone in that part of Sacramento and has served families for multiple years in a multitude of ways beyond what we heard this evening. Back in the 90s, when welfare to work became a thing, they helped many families get on their feet to find jobs, providing childcare, feeding families, providing a safe place for teenagers to be able to hang out on the weekends. And it's still true today. With the Burden Beyond Program that services many families, we recently made budget cuts that severely impacted our student support centers, where I voiced the importance of what we were doing, because we are triaging where our city is lacking to serve in mental health services. And right now, I know that La Familia has been actually training a lot of our social workers that come through to us. And so, you know, I just want to make sure that I'm voicing these things, and it sounds like there's other support on the board, but it's just important for me to say it, because, yeah, it's just like a slippery slope to talk about it right here, though. So I'm not going to say too much more, but it is, it is like, this is just a small snippet of really the impact that La Familia has serving our students and families in our
Thank you, Member Navarro. I don't see any other comments, so I'll just say real quick that I appreciate community coming out and expressing their support for La Familia. We, I want to state that it helps us understand the support, and as, although non-binding, the 7-Eleven Committee, as Member Benjamin just stated, did have support for some sort of transaction that would eventually possibly support this space going to La Familia. In order to get there, we need to vote, and then we can further that conversation as it comes about, and then we can talk about the legalities of it at 10.9. So in order to get there, I'm going to pause and see if anyone has any other comments, otherwise I'll wait for a motion.
You have a comment?
I mean, I guess we can't really discuss it now, but if we open it up, right, to sell, like obviously, La Familia wouldn't be able to compete with a real developer or for-profit developer, right? So we all have that. We're all in agreement that it wouldn't be a forced sale price, okay?
So.
Huh? I know, I know.
I guess I'll try to clarify it. This is the only legal way for us to get to a point where we can actually have a discussion around what to do with the property. So as Mr. Ralston's saying, surplus is not selling, surplus is opening the conversation to say that this is no longer a school site, so then we can actually at least try to understand what community's asking us to do and start making decisions accordingly.
Okay, I move then.
Don't steal the robust conversation for 10.9.
I know, right? Sorry, my apologies. I move then.
All right, perfect. Do we have a second? Members G have a second. I'm going to move this. Oh, Member Benjamin, you want a second?
No.
Oh, you have a question? Okay, all right, we're going to move to student preferential vote.
Aye.
Member G.
Aye.
Member Kayada.
Aye.
Member Benjamin.
Aye.
Member Navarro.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Member Navarro.
Aye.
Thank you. Much awaited 10.9. Mr. Ralston.
No pressure.
I know I'm going to really let you guys down. Guys took all the thunder away. And I have a slideshow. Good evening, President Singh, Superintendent Allen, members of the board. Based on the decisions you just made, I'll be going over next steps, options the board may consider, and take initial direction from the board for the properties. This doesn't need to be our only conversation on this, but staff will need an action tonight, which we recommend approval on, so we can begin building the team to support the board's direction and expectations. Again, equity is going to be an important part of this process. You guys have already started that conversation. Agenda. The agenda is highlighted on the screen, and my presentation should be short to allow plenty of time for public comment and board discussion. The board has several options on the properties just surplused. Options range from sale, leasing, developing, or doing nothing. Based on the board's direction, staff will bring back the how-to and path to fulfill your direction. A team of staff, legal, and real estate experts will create the best value for the choice taken by the board, return and discuss our ideas, and then finalize a plan with the additional board comments at a later date. I am unsure the exact timeline, because it has to do with the direction you choose. But we believe.
Chris, Chris, I'm just going to, folks, if you could either wait for Mr. Ralston's presentation, if you have comments, please stay. If you don't, please take your conversation outside. Wait 30 seconds.
I appreciate that clock was stopped, because that's what I have my evaluation on, that I stand there five minutes.
Can we give him a word, guys? He already has his ring.
Yeah, I couldn't, you want to see my ring I got? I won it. Won it.
What's that for?
You tell me when to go.
So I love SUST. You can restart his clock, I guess.
Okay. I don't know the exact.
Three minutes and 34 seconds.
I got 10 seconds. It'll be fine. I'm unsure the exact timeline.
Three minutes is good, Daniel.
Has to do with the choice you make, but we believe the first return to the board for discussion would be in October. Depending on how we do, it could be finalized in January, but it could take several more months. There's no set dates we need to follow, just processes. Tonight, I am seeking your approval to issue an RFP to hire a real estate consultant. We will use Government Code Section 53060 to obtain legal services, a firm that specializes in property manners and is familiar to the board. And as a reminder, the RFP, excuse me, the resolutions you just passed exempt us from the Surplus Land Act, which means we can go right to what you want to do and create some type of process that does not involve what everybody believed we would have to do, like go in an order of public agencies and park districts, etc. And I am done. That was it. See? Nothing exciting.
Do we have public comment, Brian?
We do. We have two speakers, Rachel Rios and then Arturo Alemana.
First, I just want to say how humbled I am by the support of our community that came out in support of the organization and the work that we're doing at Maple. I just want to say that you have an opportunity here now to decide what you do with the property. And while you're going to look at putting money aside, lots of money, for a real estate consultant, I would ask that you exempt Maple and not spend that money, and instead direct district staff to work directly with us, since it seems like most of the board members support the program, support us continuing to do that. So maybe exempting Maple, since I think he indicated that you can go that way, exempting Maple from that process, and then working directly with us to negotiate an appropriate process for acquiring or leasing the property, either through us or through the city. Thank you for your consideration.
Good evening, Mr. Singh and board members. I'd like to reiterate what Executive Director Rios just said. I think that you need to take her words seriously. I'd also like to remind you that if you are going to move forward with a real estate consultant, that you tell that person that they need to, in the development of their conceptual plans, listen to what you have to say, and that you tell them to exempt La Familia, or Maple, excuse me. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. No more public comment.
Thank you, Brian. So questions from our board? For Mr. Ralston. Member G, go ahead.
All right, so I'm kind of looking at the next steps. Are we doing the next steps right now in establishing a budget for real estate services?
Right now, I'm asking you to approve that we can issue the RFP. The RFP would hire a real estate consultant if you told me to go find options for the property. We would not use the real estate expert and go through a process if you said to do something else. If you told me right now, let's go figure out how to give it, sell it, whatever, to La Familia, then we would begin that process. I would still, we would come back and tell you what that process is. I don't want to speak freely right now, because I would need our legal help to tell you exactly what those steps are, but it would be, you tell me what you want us to go get going, and we would come back when we're ready to share with you. You would comment, yes, that's exactly what we wanted, Chris. No, you missed the boat. Go back and try this, and you just, we keep getting there, and I would explain that process. And it can come through updates in board communications. It can come up here in conversations. And then when it's time, you would vote on that decision.
Okay. I guess I'm just trying to balance a lot of different things in my brain right now, and my brain is very tired. I'm looking at the overarching number of these four properties altogether, which is $1.3 million coming from our general fund. Money that was given to us to educate students.
Correct.
That is important, right, I think. And we know that it is the support of our community and community partners and the nonprofits and the amazing work of La Familia that ensures the students get education. So we have to find that balance between how we are investing our resources appropriately to ensure students are getting the education they need, and it's not just about dollars and. it's not just about dollars, and it's not just about protecting programs, it's trying to find the balance of it all, right? That's where my brain is trying to balance. So, right now, I feel like I need more information to figure out what our best next steps are. I highly respect and value the work that La Familia does, and it was wonderful to just hold this and flip through the incredible stories, and that every single one of these is represented by an amazing human, and that La Familia has that reach. That is important info for us. I also feel like I'm still trying to understand the surplus, and I need information. So at the moment, if your recommendation is that we talk to an expert real estate to help us understand what these properties are and the legal parameters of them are, that would help me then understand the bigger picture. Is that making sense?
It does make sense.
Or is there additional info that I need from you right now?
So, no, what we're, what I'm taking back then is, again, creating that team, and we can, we can give you more information, not on, obviously, the school side and the enrollment side of Maple. We will start talking about the property of Maple. And that could be, here's how we get it to a, we could create an RFP based off, we want it to continue to be a nonprofit that provides these services, that has history in the community. That really narrows it down to get to where the board wants to go. But it also could be, we bring back, and here's the value of the property if you sell it. It'd go to highest bidder. Here's the value if you wanted to, say, develop it for workforce housing. There would be options that we can bring back to you, based off of what this dialogue continues to be. Board is the, this is, property is like the one thing only the board can do, and it's one of the few things the board has full control over. It's, what do you do with our property? And my job is just to facilitate that conversation, bring you those ideas, and, and if Anthony and I and our team will just continue to listen. And like I said, this doesn't have to be the only conversation. I can come up as often as I'm allowed to and just give you those updates. We can do it one property at a time. There is no rules other than, when it's time to make the decision, that's where the legal processes will come in.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Member Navarro.
So I'm not sure if I understood, Member Jean, are you making a motion to hold off on this boat?
Just the opposite.
The opposite of...
I didn't officially make a motion, but I, I think the recommendation is the right next step.
So to vote on this. So I like the idea of exempting La Familia.
Well, there's nothing to exempt.
So...
So, there's nothing to exempt. The real estate, it's not a real estate that I'm gonna pay regardless of what you do with the property. The real estate, the RFP would be created for me to be allowed to have a team if you chose that you wanted to sell a property, or you want ideas for the property. If you already know as a board, and you tell me tonight, or in the next several months, this is what I want to, I don't need a real estate, because you already know what you're doing. You already have told me what your expectation is, I'd bring that back to you to vote on. If we are looking for options, you want value of your property, you want ideas, a real estate expert for us in my past district showed what you, the city of Citrus Heights was able to do on the corner when they surplused and purchased, or when we surplused Sylvan Middle School, the Alt Sylvan Middle School, and it provided all these ideas, and it allowed the community to speak to it, and what they ended up being able to do. That person helps guide a conversation that none of us are experts in. And they can bring back renderings, and they can bring back value, and they can tell you how to do it, and they can tell you best options to do it. There's nothing to exempt La Familia from. If you, seven of you, four of you, whatever it would be, says, that's the direction, Chris, we would just begin that. We wouldn't need a real estate expert for that. There would be more on the legal side we'd need help with.
Okay. I'm thinking. You can come back to me.
Member, pass nobody else.
Yeah, I just got a little more confused right there. So, okay, I'm just gonna kinda say what my high, high-level priorities are, and let me know how that relates to this RFP. So, for Fruit Ridge, I'm kind of at this point, we're losing a lot of money there, and good work is being done, but I think that's really unsustainable, and I would like to find a way to continue having community services there, but find another way to do it that we're not losing $450,000 a year. I don't know what that means, whether it's selling it to someone who can develop something there that allows them to stay, whether it means working with the city, whether there's some other option. So maybe that's something, the county, yeah, sure. Federal government, if they wanna throw some money. They don't.
So much money there.
Well, they have in the past, but, yeah. In terms of Florentine and CP Huntington, I mean, these sites don't really have tenants right now, right? For the most part. I mean, not educational tenants, I guess, in the way that we would describe it.
Set as on CP Huntington, we can easily find them a new location.
So those, I do really wanna know what our options are, because I don't wanna just try to get the best profit. I wanna be able to invest in our communities with whatever we do here, because right now, I agree, I can't remember if it was you or Nathaniel who said it, but, like, Huntington is just an eyesore now. It's a negative to its neighborhood.
Yeah.
Doing anything else is gonna improve things. But that doesn't mean that I want them to put in some 15-story luxury apartments, you know. I wanna know what our options are. And then, for Maple in particular, I guess maybe this is the one where I don't, I wouldn't call it like exempting that, but I wanna get it to them no matter what. I don't need to know that it's worth $4 million, and that's how much we're gonna lose if we give it to them for free. I don't care. So, but I do wanna, in terms of getting it to Maple, or getting it to La Familia, I need to know, there's probably gonna have to be creative ways, because I would expect they don't just have whatever amount it would cost to get the property sitting there. I would like to know what our options are. If we were to give it at a reduced price, maybe with some sort of provision that allows us to take it back if they decide to stop operating, so that it wouldn't just at that point, and then get developed into anything else.
Sure.
Or working with the city, I mean, so that, and like you said also, I think I've been pretty clear, I do wanna look into workforce housing, if there's ways we can do it, that are consistent with what the neighborhoods are where we have sites, but in a way that doesn't have a property sitting for another 15 years while we develop it as well. Anyway, so that's my high level, and what does that mean in terms of my vote here? Is that a guess, or?
That's a yes, and let me rephrase, or try to re-box this a little bit. Member Coyote's comments is exactly what I'm trying to pull from you right now, so that I can come back and give to you the, what we think we heard, the interpretation of this conversation, and here it is. Some of it may involve me needing help, so I'm asking you to allow me to go get that help. I'm not asking you to decide that you can all use the real estate agent on a certain person, or, excuse me, a certain property. It just allows us to have a team to continue going. There's no cost if you give me, if seven of you said today, this property will go to this group, that's the goal, well, I have the goal, so I will work towards that. But there's three other properties, and you just said it yourself, CP Huntington, 24th and Florin, we're gonna need help, because I think you're gonna wanna see a certain thing, and this person will help us imagine what that will be. You'll have something to see, the community would have something to see in what you're deciding on, and we can craft an ability to get there through an RFP by, again, setting the parameters you want it to be. We want it to be two-story homes that match the CP Huntington neighborhood that has 10 acres of green space, just like the 7-Eleven was, committee was talking about, is, they had a vision. You may have a vision, and I gotta go get help to fulfill your vision. So the comments Coyote, Mr. Coyote provided is kinda what I'm trying to pull right now on all four properties, so that I can bring something back to you to continue this conversation. You may not be voting for a while. After tonight, it could be just conversation and informational for a little while. So, don't feel like there's a, you have to do it now, and there's, there's no more conversation. This is a start, right?
Thank you. Thank you. Member Navarro, before I go back to you, I'll make sure everybody else is heard. I will recuse my own speaking to members. Go ahead.
Cool beans. So, just for clarity for my colleagues here, this is a part of the process where it gives us the opportunity to have the options brought to us. So, Mr. Ralston's is asking for is the flexibility to move forward, take in our considerations, and have, and do actionable items to bring us something back that could be clear towards our points. That's, that's what he's asking for. So, along with all of that, obviously for years now, Mr. Ralston, I've been yelling, yelling, and keep on talking about it, and I'll say it again, workforce housing is very important to me.
Yep.
And figuring out how we do that. I think that in the city of Sacramento, we have an opportunity to be contributors to the solution of our housing shortage, and, and what that looks like for our constituents and residents. I would say from the county, the city, to the school district level, we all have to play our parts, and this is one thing where we can actually play a major part. So, I'm excited about that. I'm also excited to hear my colleagues valuing community and the impact of community organizations. I think that is also important in the conversation. And so as we continue to have this conversation, it's not a zero-sum game, and we're going to be able to continue to have these conversations as long as the board wants to have them, because we're in the driver's seat here.
Yep.
And, and as one of our folks who work here in the district, you're only waiting for our decision. And this is not a decision that's held by our staff members, it's not a decision that's held by our main staff, the superintendent. This is solely held with us. And so, because it's solely held with us, he's asking us for permission to be able to be kind of our concierge in communications and information, and a buffet of options that best meets the board's wants and desires. So that's what that looks like now, and I, and I don't want my colleagues here to be, you know, everybody wants to keep Maple, yes, that's, that's great, but let's not hinder the broader conversation of, we also wanna make sure we have the options, because it's our, it's our duty to do so. And so, I, I agree with what my colleagues are pointing towards, but I also agree with the recommendation for Mr. Ralston's to move forward so that we have, know what our options are in the process. So I'll leave my comments to that. And once again, when it's ready to move forward, I would love to move this forward, so we can have the continual conversations that are gonna be important in the space. Thank you.
Yeah. Can I help? He did an elegant job on exactly what we're trying to ask you to do. Let me help, my job is to help guide you through that process and to give you every idea. So, let's, let's imagine what your new schools are doing in those neighborhoods right now, right? You have three new schools, you're ribbon-cutting here very shortly, and it's gonna transform those neighborhoods greatly. And you have four properties in front of you that can do something similar but different. So I'm gonna bring you to 24th and Florin. It's a nice rectangle piece of property. Let's take a vision journey for a second. This is what I'm asking you guys to do. Here's a thought, because I, I sit and think about this a lot. Let's go buy the newly closed Walgreens and complete that parcel, and you could then open it up to be workforce housing, three stories high. And on the bottom floor, we want community services part of it.
Wow.
See where I'm going? This is what you have the opportunity to do, and this is what I can help you through. But I can't, I can't do it for you, because again, as Member Rhodes says, this is a seven-person-only job. But I can give you all my ideas all day long. I, I love it.
Thanks. That captures it. I will, before I move it over to you, Member Navarro, I'll just say that, because I haven't spoken, I will say that what you just said is exactly the type of options I want coming back to this board. I wanna hear the ideas of bringing services plus housing. There's a way to do both of those. I wanna ensure that our community organization is someone who puts that hat on, on a daily basis, and working in a nonprofit space, understands how important space is, but also understands how important housing plus space could look like, and what that could look like for community. And there's a lot of options that I see here, and I wanna show the community that, that doesn't mean we're not hearing you, actually are absolutely hearing you. And that we have to do our due diligence for the larger community and for ourselves to understand how this factors in to our values, while still maintaining and knowing the services that these organizations are providing, especially a place like La Familia for the community that's there. Having been there, visited, I absolutely understand its value, but I wanna, I would, I think Member Rhodes said he would like to move it forward, but before we get there, I'm gonna throw it back to Member Navarro, who has a comment.
Okay, so, I get that, and I get all that, but what, what if, like, in the Maple Center, we've already made up our mind? Or we're saying we haven't made up our mind, and we wanna explore options? Okay.
So, just, I wanna try to help what Mr. Ralston is saying. You, we can all have a vision. Let's pretend that we all have a vision, that we want the Maple Center to remain exactly there, La Familia continues to function how it functions. We still have to have a conversation, in my opinion, on, does that look like a location that has space downstairs plus space upstairs? Does it look like something different? Can you show us a vision? Or do we want it to continue looking like what it looks like, which we have to remember is an old school building that is kinda crumbling? If that's what folks want, that's, that's the conversation that we can have. But there's also an opportunity for us to have a vision, like, we can do some dreaming up here, because truly, this is the one opportunity we have to make a dent in issues that our county and, and city folks are struggling with, which is, maybe we have some of the solution here to, to support community in those depleted neighborhoods, to have access to housing and support services in addition to maintaining the support services that these nonprofits are providing. So, I wanna get to the vision.
Yeah. And to help you with, with Member Navarro's comment is, is taking the vision and doing what, what we're just talking about. Surplus does not mean sale. What if I ground lease as a district, which means we don't have to be property managers, we just collect a ground lease monthly charge, and we have either developed it, or hired somebody to develop it for us, and the ground lease is 30 years, 40 years, and they develop your vision. Per the rules, we retain ownership of that property, we get to still control what's on that property. Again, don't limit anything. Do not limit yourself. You tell me what you want, my job is to get it there. Ground lease could get you what you're looking for. Lease a suit could get you what you're looking for. Sell the property, but I want it to be only sold to that development. That's my job. I take that direction from you. I just don't want you to limit your ability to vision and dream.
Awesome. I can see the passion. Mr. Ralston, what I will ask you really quick is, what is, what kind of timeline, because I know this board is eager, what kind of timeline are we looking at if we do bring someone in with the understanding that we want them to possibly look at all four sites very differently? So even this real estate developer would look at, for example, La Familia with a very different lens than the other three locations that we're talking about. How quickly can we move?
Probably get them on board pretty quickly. We could come back with superintendent's permission in August, because I think June's pretty full, and I think that would be a little fast. But August, we could come back. This, this group would be able to then start throwing some information your way, seeing how you respond, and start crafting our next steps, and then just take those steps along, because there still is a conversation. One, we gotta make sure it's a vote in some fashion, and the vote doesn't have to be what's the property. The vote could just be, we could craft it to say, Chris, we want you to explore what we just heard, and give us, we can help you fine-tune it. And I'm gonna need help with, with legal to, how to ask those questions a little bit. Again, this is my first time, this is the district's first time surplusing property, so it's, it's gonna be a little bit new for, for some of those conversations, but I think we don't have to delay it. It can be as fast as you want it to be. I could be up here every board meeting if you wanted me to.
Okay. I, I would just ask that we continue to get a lot of information on this, especially like what the current lease, current lease agreement is, how do we move quickly, and how do we move with the vision that is encompassing everything that was set up here by all of our board members, to ensure that those four locations, from what I'm hearing, are viewed to some level very separately from each other. I don't wanna, I don't think any of us is asking for a real estate developer to come up with a gigantic plan for all four sites. It's, each site is unique.
And I think that they'll be able to come and bring examples from other communities that they've already worked through, and you can, you'll give us your comments on those. Yes, no, I want it in blue, I want it in glass, you know, it just, you will figure it out.
And could you speak to the, to some level, the community's process in that? So we have folks here, obviously, how would they play a... have folks here, obviously, how would they play a role, and, you know, when you come back, it would be an agendized item, assuming-
It would always be agendized, it'll always be public. There is no closed session until we get into a negotiation for a property.
All right. I don't see any comments. I do hear that Member Rhodes wanted to move when the opportunity was there, so Member Rhodes?
Hang on a second.
Yes, you can. We'll start with the student preferential.
Aye. Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Kayata.
Aye.
Member Benjamin. Member Navarro.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Member Yvar.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, moving on. Future board meetings, see y'all here June 5th and June 26th. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Aye.